Right, so it is 9:30.
Yes, it is, Madam Chair.
Okay. We good, Jamie?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, I'm going to call the Select Board to order for Monday, February 5th, 2024. And we are going to go into Executive Session and we will return no sooner than 6:00 PM. Jeff, if I could get a motion.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I move that we enter into Executive Session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, 21A7, to comply with our act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, 22FG, to review, approve, or discuss the possible release of Executive Session meeting minutes dated January 2nd, 2024, January 16th, 2024, and January 22nd, 2024, as well as pursuant to General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Town Administrator.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Don?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Called the Board of Select, uh, Select Board Meeting back to order from Executive Session. We were in Executive Session earlier. And we did take action on Item A. And that was a vote to approve and not release without Town Council approval. We also took action in a discussion on B. And we will be taking a vote on that next week on the 12th. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm also announcing that as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing no one. And waiting on Senator Seer. I'm gonna move out of order to the consent agenda. And so that we don't have to make you hang around so long this evening. We'd like to go ahead and get a, a motion on Item A.
Adam Chair?
Yep.
Before we go there, on Item A, maybe the Deputy Police Chief could introduce?
He, he is going to.
Okay.
He was just gonna make the motion and then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we approve the following appointments for the Harwich Police Department as recommended by the Police Chief. Scott McFarland, Student Officer, effective February 19th, 2024. Rashid Arnick, Student Officer, effective February 19th, 2024. DeAndre Bennett, Student Officer, effective February 19th, 2024. Jake Fugate, Student Officer, effective February 19th, 2024. And Nora Buckley-Dyer, Emergency Telecommunications Dispatcher, effective February 6th, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kevin, would you like to give an introduction?
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. Kevin Consonine, Deputy Chief. Bear with me, I'm gonna read part of this. We've never had five hires at once, I think, in front of you. Which, which says something. We've been trying for a couple of years now to hire four. I think we've struck out at two. So this is a good group of hiring. We're very proud of this group. And I think you'll know why in a minute. The Harwich Police has an authorized strength of 35 full-time sworn officers. Due to several recent retirements, the department has currently five vacancies. Tonight, we'll have four of those taken. We completed a hiring process and produced four great student officer candidates for your consideration and one outstanding public safety dispatcher. Each of the four student officer candidates have completed all their requirements to, to attend the next session of the Plymouth Police Academy, which starts February 26th. Hiring in the Police Department is, is no different than hiring anywhere else as of the last few years. It's been extremely, extremely difficult. I'm proud to say that this group in particular, with the four officers, they're probably sick of me. I've worked with them since October. We started the hiring process with interviews in October, command staff interviews in November. And with all the state mandates to get them on board, it's an arduous process. And I will tell you, with this group, they've been responsive. They've been outstanding to deal with. I do wanna take this time, as you recall, last summer, Officer Kylie Lopes and Charlie McCaffrey were in front of you for this same reasoning. And tonight, Officer McCaffrey is here. And it's just great, he's on field training. It's great for, to, I think, for everybody to see when they come out of the academy. And they're on the road learning. And will reap those benefits in April. So, um, from, we say this often, from start to finish of the hiring process, these recruits will not be on the road on their own for a year and a half to two years. So although it's great to have them going, the academy is, is a long process, field training is a long process. So that's important for everybody to understand. Finally, I wanna thank the Interview and Hiring Committee. This is a group of police officers, dispatchers, and sergeants that do the initial interviews with all of our candidates. And they produce an outstanding pool for us to choose from. And I just wanna thank them. We often say it, Chief Gilmet often says it, the reputation of the House, Harwich Police Department is next to none. And with the, with the hiring we've had, with transfers we've had from other departments of late, and hiring through the Hiring Committee, I think that's evident, and you'll see that evident tonight. So what I wanna do is just bring each candidate up one at a time. We can just give you a brief background of each. We'll start with candidate number one, Scott McFarland. Scott retired from the United States Army at the rank of Colonel after a 27-year career. Scott holds a BA in Criminal Justice from Stonehill College and an MBA from Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. Scott is also a graduate of the US Army War College Executive Leadership School. And with Scott, and, and I know it's probably okay to say this, Scott chose Harwich. Proud to say that he was in the running for a lot of other departments. And he chose Harwich, which I thank him. And it really shows, I think, how great our department is. Thank you, Scott.
Fellow, a fellow alum, cuz I went to Stonehill too, so welcome.
Rashid Arnick?
Yes.
Rashid retired from the United States Coast Guard in 2018 after a 21-year career that included the experience as a boarding officer and then 19 years as an aviation survival technician, helicopter rescue swimmer, with multiple tours in Kodiak, Alaska. Rashid also recently worked as a firearms instructor and range manager. Okay, number three, DeAndre Bennett. DeAndre is a six-year veteran of the United States Marine Corps. DeAndre is currently finishing his BA in Criminal Justice Studies at the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth. DeAndre brings experience from his past employment with the Department of Youth Services and is an armed security officer currently in Boston. Jake Fugate. Jake has experience as a private security officer and most recently as a public safety officer and dispatcher for Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center in Boston.
Nice.
Come on up. To go along with our police officers, the Harwich Police Department has authorized strength of five full-time emergency telecommunication, telecommunications dispatchers. We currently have one open position with hiring Kylie as a police officer. Department has recently completed the hiring process and produced the candidate for your consideration, Nora Buckley, who finished first in the process. Nora has previous experience as a public safety dispatcher for the town of Easton. For five years on Easton before relocating to the Cape. Since relocating to the Cape, Nora has worked as a Special Education Instructional Assistant for the Montemoy School District. Welcome, Nora. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. And the amount of experience that you've just introduced tonight is overwhelming. So we, we welcome you. Although we haven't taken our official votes, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Welcome. And we're so lucky to have you.
Feel safer already.
I know, right? And seeing that we took that out of order, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to new, new business Item A so we don't have to make Kevin hang around too much longer. So Kevin, I'd like to invite you up at the podium or the seats, whatever you feel comfortable. This is in front of us, as you all know. Chief Gilmet will be retiring. He's been a wonderful asset to our town. And we have a, a letter of interest from Deputy Consonine. And I will open it up to the board for any discussion. Or we can hear from Kevin first, whichever way you'd like to go about it.
Kevin first, please.
Okay.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Deputy Chief Consonine. I just wanna thank you for this opportunity. As I wrote my letter, clearly Chief Gilmet has been a great influence to me and a great mentor to me in my time in administration upstairs. I began my career as a special officer in 1996. Richard Wastek knows that very well. Directing traffic at Bank 28 for one summer. 97 to 99, I became a year-round special while I went to college. I became a full-time officer in 1999 and did that to 2007. One of the other things I put in my letter was my love for community policing. And I'm sure it's no secret in this room for that love. That started, I did four years as a school resource officer for the Harwich Middle and Elementary Schools during that time. And that's where I really garnered that love for community policing. But more importantly, working with the parents and the citizens of Harwich, as well as the staff at that time of the Harwich Public Schools. I was promoted sergeant 2007 to 2014. And lieutenant 2014 to 2019. And as, as many know, as lieutenant, there's, there's operations lieutenant and administrative lieutenant. So I started downstairs in operations in charge of patrol and then moved upstairs to administration. That is truly where you learn the ins and outs of the department. Whether it be budgeting, personnel, and working with, with town department heads. And then was promoted to Deputy Chief in 2019. So I just really appreciate the opportunity to discuss this with you tonight. And look forward to hopefully being your next chief.
Thank you. We really appreciate you coming tonight. And I'm gonna open it up to board members. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've known Kevin a long time. For the last 23 years, I've made no secret of the fact that I really look to the Fire Department as an example of excellence in town. They are continuing to create an organizational structure which brings the best and the brightest out in everybody. And they always have people ready to stand up. I'm really proud to have you sitting in front of us for the Police Department because this, this is something I've been looking for, for years, to hire somebody from within as a respect of the individuals there who I know will carry us forward, especially with the community. And you are everywhere, indeed. Everywhere I go, I see you. So you make a great example, and I would wholeheartedly endorse you being promoted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Jeff?
Sure. Kevin, thank you. And we have the best town. We have the best police and fire departments. You fit that perfectly, in my opinion. I love the story, how you started here. And you're, you're gonna, you're gonna finish here, I, I, I hope. I do wanna mention that your community service with the Polar Plunge is something else. I don't know why the hell you do it.
Nor do I.
I don't know, maybe we'll talk about that at another time. But not only do you do one heck of a job for, for our town wearing that uniform, but you also dedicate yourself in other ways. And you have my whole endorsement as well.
Thank you.
Michael?
I'm honored to have known you all 27 years, I think.
Yes.
Having my mother been in the Police Department for 30 years. I was there when you were hired. Thanking the Fire Chief for a strong recommendation for you, as well as the outgoing chief and many other chiefs on the Cape and many people on patrol in the town of Harwich. You have my endorsement.
Thank you.
And I'm just gonna say ditto. No, Kevin, you, you just bring so much to this town in so many different ways, of course, with the police, but also just in the community and being embedded in the community that I fully endorse you as taking over for Chief Gilmet. And I thought both letters were to your testament. So if I could get a motion?
I'd be willing to, I'd like to make a motion that we promote Kevin Consonine to chief subject to successful completion in negotiations with the board.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Congratulations.
Madam Chair, before he leaves, there are several representatives from the Harwich Police Department that we might wanna have come in?
Yeah.
To share the moment?
Yeah.
Come on in.
Come on in, folks.
And the duck. And Fritz.
Yeah. Why don't you get a nice group photo, Bill?
Right up here. What I did on my summer vacation.
I say we give him another round of applause.
So we get to put that next to this?
Yeah, so we can get something. We need one of these.
Madam Chair, as they come in, you should note for the record that Deputy soon-to-be Chief Consonine is joined by members of his family as well.
Oh, where is he?
He may wanna recognize them for the record.
Yes. Kevin, you should recognize your family.
Yeah, thank you. I think you might forget about that. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, I do have, I keep this brief. I do wanna thank a number of people, obviously, members of the board, for having the faith in me for this next journey. Members of the Fire Department, Chief of Blank, Deputy Chief Thornton, thank you. The most, one of the most, one of the most important is the members of the Police Department. Not all are here, obviously, but a good number are here. For not only myself, but for our new hires, which I think just is, is amazing. So this is the group that goes out every day to protect our town. And they do the hard work. They absolutely do the hard work. And blown away by the number of civilian staff we have here and officers. And I can't thank them enough. Thank you. Next is my family, my wife Nicole, my in-laws, my father, and my two children, Michael and Abigail. I've always thought it important, especially for my kids, to be involved in this and be involved in my job and for them to, to see, you know, the ability to move up. And I think that's really important, so thank you. Lot of community members in the room that are, that are here, thank you. And everybody knows my Bob Curry story. He was my teacher at Le Creve Franklin High. And I, I truly, Bob is the reason why I started in 1996. And if Bob wasn't such an outstanding guy that said, "Come on for a ride-along", I wouldn't be here. And I will say, I was called down to the Vice Principal's Office once in high school. And Bob happened to be the Vice Principal that day. And it was a very brief conversation, so great. But all seriousness, thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah. Refreshingly happy moments. Yes. Is that Julian yet? Julian Seer is supposed to be coming, but not here. Yeah, I wanna say about golf.
Oh, yeah.
What is that? I'll just give it a minute. So... Not seeing Julian Seer here yet for public comment. I am just also gonna note that we will not be having the public hearing under Item 6 for the golf course. We will be doing that next week. So just in case anybody's here for golf, I don't wanna make you hang around. We're gonna be having that public hearing on the 12th. So we'll go back and continue to take public comment out of order until we have Julian or we'll follow up with it. Yeah, could we go to B? Thank you.
Are you gonna open that for public comments?
Not yet.
Generally.
Yeah, I'm gonna do these. Okay, so we're gonna move forward with B.
I move that we approve the following committee recommendations from the Select Board Interview Committee. Victoria Brown, Full Member, Cultural Council Committee, term due to expire June 30, 2024. And Anthony DiMauro, Full Member, Harwich Housing Committee, term to expire June 30, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. And we can go through C and D, and then I'll go back to public comment.
I move that we approve a 100, a 100 birthday proclamation for Mary Rado Baron.
Second.
I know. Discussion, any board members? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Good for Mary. I approve that we approve. That 100, looking at that 100 is something else, I gotta be honest with you.
Right?
I have no chance of getting it. I move that we approve the Select Board Meeting Minutes, January 16th, 2024, and January 22nd, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, we'll open it back up to public comments and announcements. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak?
Good evening, I'm Carrie Sherner. I'm the Health Director. And I just wanted to update the board and the public regarding the recent sewer extension approval. At the January Board of Health meeting, the board approved an extension for connection to the sewer system for the remainder of Phase 2 residents. Legal has reviewed and accepted the vote. And the Water, Wastewater Commission finalized their extension at the meeting last week. The extension will allow any residents in Phase 2 that have not yet connected to the sewer system a further connection date to March 3rd, 2025. And this was due to the fact that there wasn't any financial aid available yet. So we encourage our residents to go to the Barnstable County and check out the Aqua Fund. Reminder notices will be mailed out informing residents of the new deadline. And the Board of Health has also finalized an internal policy for connection extensions based on the age of the system and hardships. We encourage all residents that want to get more information regarding those extensions to call the Health Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment and announcement?
Hi, Ashley Sivington, Director of Youth and Family Services. I've got a few programs that are getting ready to kick off in March, but we've got registration open now, so I wanted to let y'all know and hopefully help spread the word that they're happening. The first one I am really excited about, we're gonna be putting on a life skills series for high school students over at the Community Center, beginning on March 4th and running through May 6th. We're gonna be covering a variety of things that high schoolers really need to know for after high school, things like how to register to vote. Emily Mitchell's gonna be coming to talk about that. We're gonna be talking about safety, how to respond in an emergency, what to do if your car breaks down. We've got a representative from the Police Department and Fire Department who will be helping out with that one. Parenting, understanding grief, nutrition on a high school budget, a whole lot of different things that we really want people to know in order to be healthy, functioning adults. So registration is currently open. Space is limited for this one. So people do need to sign up. Questions can reach out to me. Next thing that's happening, also beginning the same week in March, Girl Power is making a return for third-grade girls. This is a mentorship program where we pair the girls up with council on aging volunteers. So it's an intergenerational program. We have a lot of fun doing different things to support the building of self-confidence, body positivity, all sorts of good stuff kinda going on there. Registration is still open for that one as well. And then one of the, the Children's Behavioral Health Needs Assessment that I had talked to you, you about a couple of months ago now, they were still in the process of gathering information. Very, very, very preliminary results of that are indicating that one of the biggest things that is identified as a need is for youth to have a voice, to be heard, to be part of solutions that are being developed in their communities, partially for them, but also just in general. So to meet that need, we're gonna be starting something, hopefully in March as well, called Youth Voice. This is an opportunity for students in grades 6 through 12 to meet, once a month, I'll kinda oversee whatever they need on that. But it's a chance for them to be able to say what their needs are and then to take it one step further and be part of whatever solutions they come up with related to that. So could be awareness building, could be meeting with different town departments or boards, just to kinda be able to, to voice what it is that they're actually needing instead of us guessing. So registration is open for that. That's just a quick sign up so I know who's coming and if I need a bigger space than what I've got at Albro House. And then last one, also starting in March, Tuesdays in Harwich are gonna be for coping skills. So we'll be running groups for elementary-age students, middle school students, and high school students, each their own group, once a week. They'll run on a five-week rotation with a different coping skill each week. Yeah, thank you.
Maybe we should get adults to go to the gym.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanna take the opportunity to do a public service announcement for Girl Power. Destiny had gone through that. And frankly, it's an excellent program. It creates self-esteem, it creates self-confidence. And for the purposes of the, all of the people, when you talk about a town raising all of its children, this is something that's really important to make sure that people go to because it, it creates a situation where you don't have to chase problems in later years.
Exactly, exactly. We're doing a lot of focusing on prevention with things. So thank you for recognizing that, and I'm glad you had a positive experience.
And where do they find the sign up for your registration?
Absolutely. So signups for some of these, the easiest way to find them is to just go ahead and reach out to me directly. And then I can either get them signed up on the backend or send them the link to sign up for the form, depending on which program we're talking about.
Great, great, thank you. Anything else, any board members?
Yeah, two things, Madam Chair. The first is, I just wanna remind our restaurant.
I just meant, did you have any questions?
I just wanna remind you of our restaurant.
That's right, we've got some really good ones in town.
And while I'm on the subject, thank you for everything. Over two. That 100, they really threw you off.
Thank you very much.
And you approved of her presentation?
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Jeff.
No, we're gonna wait. We're gonna go at the end.
Hi, Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director. Today, I would like to wish all of the community a happy birthday as the Community Center officially opened 24 years, 24 years ago for its soft opening on April 5th. So we are officially 24 years old. I mean, February. I think I got what Jeff had.
Chief, should we clear the room?
I think there's something going on.
February, yeah. February, yeah. It's February. I will. Anyway. Back to the duck at hand. So we are celebrating and we are doing our Decorated Duck Program. We started giving out ducks on February 1. We have given out over 75 ducks. The oldest person to take out a duck is in their 90s and the youngest is two years old. Some have already returned them and they are phenomenal. So you pick up a duck, decorate it, return it to us. It will be on Ducks on Display at the Community Center for a week. And then the week of school vacation, we will be judging the ducks and prizes will be given out on Tuesday of February vacation, which is the 20th, at least I think it is. We also have, am I right?
Yes, you're right.
Okay, Imagination Stage is happening February 8. We are partnering with the Cape Cod Theater Company, Harwich Junior Theater, and doing a free event for younger people who might be interested. This is a great way to find out if it's something you're interested in. So that is February 8, 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at the Community Center. These are all in February. The Bingo Valentine's Day Bingo, February 13, from 6:00 to 8:00, another free event. We have done Bingo a few times. The last time we did it, we had over 70 people come. It's a great time. The next is on Thursday, February 15. We are doing the first ever community free spaghetti dinner. And I would like to take a moment to personally invite each and every one of you to come. If you'd like to help, it is an unbelievable opportunity, the amount of people that have shown interest in coming. The Council on Aging has graciously decided to provide band service to get some of our seniors here who can't drive. There's been a whole group of school age students who are excited about coming. So I would love for any of you and certainly all of the public, it is free. I'm not cooking, you're all safe. And we will be serving until we run out, and I hope we have enough for everyone. It's till 7:00 p.m., so if you can come, we'd love to have you.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Branding is everything. And with that, you really have missed an opportunity here by not naming this the Jim Noonan Spaghetti Dinner for those people who went through this. So the only difference is-
Did I not say that?
The only difference is that he used to sell 100, for 100 meals, he used to sell out 500 or 600 tickets and tell you, you're not going.
Oh. I missed my calling, wait.
It was the exact opposite.
Well, we're happy to have everyone come and eat a little pasta. It starts at 5:30. Are you guys going to come cook? Okay. Then we have a magic show, I'm sorry, I know you have a long agenda, on February 20. That is also the day that we will be voting on the Ducks on Display. That is a free event at 2:00 p.m. It's with Crazy Davy, who is someone who has been here before and well-liked by all of the young and old alike. Then we were back to doing our duck hunt in the Community Center, one day only, starting February 22 at 8:00 a.m. No early duck hunters. There are 10 ducks hidden around the building and you get prizes for each and every one that you find. And there are some decoy ducks that are hidden as well, so you have to find the right ducks. Are you tied yet? Because then we're going to have a family dance party on Friday night, February 23, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. If you can't come to the supper, you can come dance. Then our continuing series, the Cape Cod Military Museum Lecture Series, February 23 at 2:30 p.m. Also, on February 22, we are doing the Lend a Hand Program where you can just simply put your handprint. We're going to frame them and put them all across the building so people can see just how many people had a hand in the success of the Community Center. So get your paint, because I need all these handprints. I'm almost, and I promise, the last one is that we are again working with the Cape Cod Theater Company and Harwich Junior Theater and are, there are three pigs and one elephant that are hidden around town for their- Elephant and Piggy, We Are in a Play is the next performance that starts on February 10. So they went out and were hidden February 1. So far, I will update you, there has been one, the elephant has been found, and one of the piggies, which means there are still two piggies remaining around town. And we give hints on, in the building and on our Facebook page. And I would just remind all of you, we do do a newsletter and inside the newsletter is all of this information with the correct dates other than what I said. I appreciate it, I'm sorry I said the wrong date, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Carolyn. No, go ahead.
All right, I will.
Careful, it's catching.
Carolyn, I just want to say, I got my hands on that newsletter the other night at the Community Center. It's really something else. You do a real fine job, so thank you.
Thank you. It's the staff.
Well, it's pretty impressive, that newsletter. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else for public comments and announcement?
Just me, Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
Now, can I go now? Just want to remind everybody about the first stop on the 2024 Listening Tour. Restaurant, hospitality, and bar. Cindy Williams and I will be at the Community Center on February 15 from 5:30 to 7:30 in Room 3 to discuss all the ways that our town and our town's partners can work better to create an incredible 2024 summer. So thank you.
Right, thank you, Jeff.
And last one, sorry. Joe, I think, is this one on our website, on the town website, the Low-Lying Roads Project?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to make note, Wednesday, February 7, this 2024, at 4:00 p.m. is the Cape Cod Commission is holding a virtual public meeting on our Low-Lying Roads Project, which is comprised of North Road and Bay Road at Route 28. So anybody who's interested in learning a little bit more about how our roads flood, that would be where to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. I still see no sign of Julian Seer. Is he here? Yeah. Because if he's not, we'll move on.
But hold that foot, because we really do want him to talk later.
No? Okay. Excuse me. Okay, so then we're going to hear from the town administrator on the budget. Which is item B under New Business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members. In a minute, you'll see a presentation that is meant to augment the budget report that is in the packet submitted last week along with my cover memo. Thank you. And I'm aiming this way with- Perfect. All right, thank you. So here is my presentation and budget message for fiscal year 2025. And again, as you'll see in the report itself, my message and recommendation as of this moment is for us to proceed with caution and deliberate action. And that's a result of current uncertainties and certain budget drivers, both revenue and expense, that I'll go into in a moment. But for that purpose, then, I have had preliminary conversations with our town clerk to strategize on potential special town meeting dates in the fall, trying to navigate around all the other dates that are going on in the clerk's office relative to elections. Should we want to rely upon those town meetings to reevaluate and examine actual revenues versus the estimates that we have, as well as an opportunity to potentially reassess needs. And again, I'll go into more detail on that in a moment. Within that budget, we have some key dates. Of course, tonight, I'm presenting in accordance with the charter, the budget and budget message as is required by Chapter 9. Next week at your meeting, you will have the full detail of the operating budget. The Finance Director and I are tying all the numbers back to the report that you had this evening to make sure that you have that line-by-line detail and so that we can begin a discussion as early as next week. But also ahead of your requirement that on or before the 4th Tuesday of February, in accordance with the charter, where you would present or send, as the charter says, with or without amendment, to the Finance Committee. And then, of course, as you know, we have the budget meeting scheduled for Saturday, March 2. This year, we're having that event at the Community Center. This is what I've referred to before as the Round Robin, but this is the first opportunity for the Finance Committee and the Select Board to meet jointly to go through the operating budgets, enhancement of services, and anything else you want to dive into as we progress towards town meeting. In addition to those deadlines, I also want to let you know that the Montemoy Regional School District has asked to present to you folks on Monday, February 26, for their preliminary budget. Of course, in our documents tonight, we have their early assessment numbers, but they're exactly that early numbers, so they will present to you formally on the 26th of February. And then, of course, the last item that we will find out as the time progresses is the Finance Committee's requirement, based on the charter, to conduct an actual public hearing on the operating budget itself. So I can pause there if there are any questions, otherwise I'll jump right into the numbers themselves.
Any questions from board members?
All right, thank you. So then next up, we would be talking about the revenue, or what we've referred to in the past as sources, and sources are balanced with uses. And that's the, really the bulk of what you see on Page 3 in the report. In addition to what you see in the report on Page 4, there are some additional facts I wanted to present tonight. First, with regard to unrestricted general government aid, or what's lovingly referred to as UGA and municipal finance circles, but what we all really know to be local aid. This number that we have baked in right now comes from Governor Healy's proposed budget, known as House 2. She filed that back on January 25. And some key things to tie into that. The governor announced that there is a consensus revenue projection, and the consensus makes reference to the governor, representatives from the House and from the Senate, and their consensus number is that they expect to see state revenue increase year over year by 2%. Now, despite that 2% growth, the governor has presented a budget that increases local aid by 3%. And so what's happening right now in the preliminary numbers for us is we're actually seeing close to a 6% increase in local aid revenue year over year. And as you'll see in the expense side of it, for the first time since 2020, I believe, we'll actually, if the numbers hold true, actually be getting more in local aid than we pay it on state assessments. So not a bad thing to have happen, and something that tends to happen in even numbered years. So I'll leave that for others to figure out what the connection is there. Beyond local aid, we rely greatly, of course, upon our estimated local receipts. And so what you see in our documentation right now, we've had our departments go through it, we are anticipating, as of this writing, close to a 6% increase in estimated local receipts year over year, or just over $880,000. These numbers, as you can see in charts that are available from Division of Local Services, reflect past year's conditions and the strength of the Cape Cod economy. Again, these are estimated numbers. We do compare them to past year's estimatives and actuals, and it is an ongoing evaluation. One of those items would have been your golf fees that you talk about tonight, so we know there'll be greater discussion about local receipts as we progress through the budget process. And then interfund transfers, so I included in the materials a chart from the Division of Local Services that talks about all of the funding sources that we rely upon, one of which would be other funds available, interfund transfers. So what you're seeing in this year for fiscal year 25 are increases in available funds, such as the Public Education Government, or PEG Access Cable Fund, and the first-time use of Special Purpose Stabilization Fund for wastewater. And you'll recall that the town meeting adopted that back in October of 2021, under the Special Town Meeting Article 5. The fund went live on July 1 of 2022. And most recent receipt estimates that were provided as of the end of the first quarter of fiscal year 24, so the end of September, put that balance at north of 1.46 million. And so we'll have more discussion about other funds that are available. And as I say up on the chart there, so Administration and Finance will continue to vet these numbers, and as you'll see on expenses, there are some other numbers that, one key driver will be coming in next week, but I can pause here if there's any questions on the revenue.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's going to be something I'm going to bring up in two other discussions that are happening after this, but what's been happening with our share of rooms taxes relative to this? I mean, and when are those figures being taken off of?
So by rooms taxes, you mean the hotel motel tax?
Well, there's about 12 of them that derive revenue to us. Some of them are dedicated to, you know, to the searing and others to us in general. But the question I have is, what are you looking at as a projection forward and what are you basing that on, this past fiscal year or the one before?
So the projections that we're relying upon, as referenced here, are actual receipts that are, have been deposited from the Commonwealth to the town. So for us, for hotel motel-
As of when?
So that was the number I referenced for the special purpose. That was quarter end for first quarter of 2024 fiscal year.
Okay.
So, you know, as we progress, we'll have more numbers coming in. I think, generally speaking, I'm looking for my lifeline, I think we could expect to see second quarter in the coming weeks, if not the next month, and so on and so forth. And to the earlier question, for us, as you may recall, town of Harwich was at 4% for hotel motel tax in October 2021. At the Special Town Meeting, town meeting adopted the 2% increase, and that 2% was split, and the split goes 25% to Special Purpose Stabilization for wastewater, Special Purpose Stabilization Fund for Affordable Housing, similar balance, and then the remainder of that travels to the Stabilization Fund, our General Purpose Stabilization Fund.
And just to be clear, Madam Chair, through you, I'm not talking about the percentages, and I'm not casting any aspersions on this, I'm just wondering, as I said, I'm going to bring this up within the context of the Clean Waters Board, but the projections, I am just not entirely certain that in the aggregate that they're going to be as robust, you know, this year and next year as people might expect.
Yeah, I wouldn't disagree with that at all. What we're looking at here is a portion of available receipts, if we even have to go that way. I think the point I'd want to have everyone bear upon is that although we rely greatly on the levy limit and the local receipts, there are other funds available. If memory serves correctly, when we adopted the Special Purpose Stabilization Funds, it required a 2/3 vote of town meeting. Governor Healy, however, signed legislation that reduced the quantum of vote on special purpose stabilization, not our general stabilization, but special purposes, they reduce the quantum to straight majority. But my point would be that beyond the levy limit and receipts, we have other funds that may be available to help offset the budget costs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Michael?
Yeah.
Jeff? You can go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. So next up would be the other side of the ledger, our expenses, or as we like to call them here, our uses. And so you can see on the slide there that we see 5.4% growth year over year, including 2.69% in departmental operating budgets. However, some additional background, as I mentioned before, you can see under expenses, we have our state assessment. And if the governor's proposal holds, as we hope it does, we'll get more in aid than we see in assessments, but the assessments have gone up year over year. up year over year, just over 4%. I'm going to pass over for right now the overlay discussion, that negative number there. I want to vet that further with our Board of Assessors and Finance Team. So right now, you can see that there's a significant negative year over year on that one. On the other items that you can see that tie to Article Four, so remember, as we see in Appendix B, Article Four is our operating, our departmental operating budgets, which are made up the salaries and wages lines versus the expense line, but then several other areas, as you can see on the chart on Page Three. Some of those other areas, obviously, a big number there is related to group health insurance. So right now, we're projecting a 10% increase year over year, and I'm hopeful that that's a placeholder number. As you may recall, we're part of the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, and the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group represents any communities on Cape Cod, most of whom have their group health insurance through that, not all, but most. And we are a community that participates in that. So there's a meeting on this Wednesday, February 7th, where we hope to have final numbers on the rate. Again, the hope is that the year-over-year increase is less than the 10% placeholder. As a comparison, the Mass Interlocal Insurance Association, or MIA, as we know it for our general insurance, for their health insurance clients, they presented back at MMA that the average increase for their health insurance clients was 6.6%. So again, hoping it's less than 10% for Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, and we always keep an eye towards what MIA tends to sort of lead the way on as far as rate increases, or percentage increase year over year. And then, we have our general insurance, that 4.5% increase, that is a confirmed number from MIA. That's our general insurances and deductibles and premiums. However, we may be able to, year over year, as we do participate in programs that can drop that number down, but for budgeting purposes, the number is set at 4.5% year over year. And then, of course, when we talk about our uses, our expenses, we know the big part of the equation is our education bill, so to speak. So you can see on the table there on Page Three that the Monomoy assessment for the Town of Harwich, and this was a point-in-time statement of January 16th, but Monomoy had a 6.7% increase year over year. And again, that's just Harwich's assessment. It's not the total budget for the school district. However, we know that, or Kathleen and I will be joining our counterparts in Chatham and Monomoy next week for another finance. We meet monthly, and again, School District will be coming in the end of this month to present to you directly. So those numbers will change. The question is, in what direction? And then, similarly, we did hear preliminary numbers from Superintendent Bob Sanborn and Business Manager Aaron Orchid for the Cape Tech. And so you can see there that even though they're a smaller portion of our education budget, their preliminary number shows them having a 9.46% increase year over year. Again, preliminary, so between group health insurance and the education bills, you know, that's why this is my budget as presented today, but there's still a lot that's in flux and in play. I'm going to take a moment to take a sip and see if there's any questions on expenses.
Do you have any questions? Michael? Jeff?
All right, carrying on. Thank you. So then, what is the current outlook, or what is the financial outlook for the Town of Harwich? And that's where I relied upon our good friends at the Division of Local Services. I threw some charts in there that I think are helpful, and there's several more that I've acquired, but for right now, what I want to draw attention to is three of the charts that were put in the presentation, and that talks about stability. So when you look at Division of Local Services, what they report year over year, they've got some great data analytics on their webpage, so I think anyone that's interested can go to mass.gov, and you want to search on data analytics. But within that, we can see that our total budget for the Town of Harwich year over year, going back over the last five years, is relatively smooth over time, which I think is important for our residents and taxpayers. And similarly, you can see that our general fund expenditures, again, per capita year over year, again, are fairly smooth. Beyond that... I'm combing all my documents here. What I also included was just the snapshot on revenue by sources, and so this gets to what I was talking about earlier for some of our anticipated revenues, but you can see that how the state has tracked what we report. Again, our four major categories are our levy limit, state aid, local receipts, and other funds. And so, you know, we're relying upon the same data, just newer numbers, and you can see that over time, even with changes in property values, we have stability in our tax rate, and we have stability in our budgets year over year. I think that's everything I have, other than to say, we do have strong reserves on hand. We have just under $6 million, I believe, in our general purpose stabilization for our rainy day fund. Of course, we have those new special purposes that we're not tapping into yet, but the combined balance of those two is well over $3 million if we anticipate deposits for a second quarter. And again, positive message right now, and potential segue to Senator Seer, is that we're happy to see that the state aid trend is in a positive direction, so hopefully we'll have some messaging on that tonight as well.
Right.
And with that, that is my budget presentation for fiscal year 2025, and I look forward to working with you folks through the coming weeks and months, as well as your counterparts in the Finance Committee and our community as we progress towards town meeting.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions from the Board?
Enhancement of services?
Oh, thank you. So, yeah, I had that in my notes. Thank you. So the enhancement of services, given that the operating budget that I presented allows us, as a community, to provide the services that are currently being provided today. So what people are used to in this moment in time is what's carrying forward. So what you have in your documentation, I think it's on Page Seven, are several enhancement of services for seven departments. If I remember correctly, there are six that are looking for enhancements that are covering salaries and wages, potential positions to be added, including one that's been talked about here at the board level for human resources. And then, the six departments have fringe benefits and others related to those, as well as one other department having an operational expense. For me, for right now, there's not enough information. I think the numbers I show you, we technically have. Again, I'm waiting to hear what happens Wednesday on health insurance. I'll know if we have a surplus or if I'm dealing with a deficit. And so if we're dealing with a surplus, it's a very small number, nowhere near enough yet to commit to any of the enhancement of services. And so my recommendation is, as we progress towards that, that, in my opinion, should be a big part of the conversation that happens between the Department Heads, Administration, Finance, Finance Committee, and Select Board in early March and throughout the month of February. But right now, my operating budget does not include any enhancements. It is current services provided for, no cuts to those sources carrying forward year over year.
Thank you. And we will get a memo from you on what you would recommend later in the game versus what you may not recommend, correct?
Correct. And that's going to be influenced by the numbers that are hopefully shoring up over the coming weeks on revenue.
Okay. And, you know, March 4th, it's, we're up against the wall at that point. It seems a lot to cram into that date. Madam Chair, we might want to have a meeting, another meeting to talk about these. For all of us that have participated in the March 4th, it's pretty quick. It's about a half an hour per department head, if I remember correctly.
It's March 2nd, right?
March 2nd.
That's the only thing that gave me concern. I think this year, it's Saturday, March 2nd. Yep.
15 minutes might be more like it.
Right. So I'd ask for a more lengthy conversation on that, and then, Joe, just one that you can think about between now and then. Administration, 115,000, and then you have onboarding of 30,000 for that position, whereas Wreckin Youth, granted, it's only a $62,000 position, onboarding is 5,000. So my question to you is, what's the difference in onboarding besides 25,000?
So in addition to onboarding, it would actually be the resources that a human resources director, which is what's being contemplated currently, the board's directive, its expenses related to a human resources department as well. But we have the Munis reports, and we can break all that out. We do, dollar for dollar.
Okay. And just to, so you can anticipate my questions, it would be nice to understand, in some of these, I know that they're recent conversations, but it would appear we're throwing bodies at fixing something, and I'd like to get the justification as to why and what the current employee level is in those departments and why we would need another person.
Understood.
Thank you.
Jeff, do you have anything?
I don't. Thank you.
Don? Okay. So if you're finished, Joe, I think I'll go to Julian. Senator Seer, welcome.
Here.
Yeah, wherever you're comfortable.
Have a seat. I warmed him up for you.
Thank you so much, and apologies for the delay. We were doing a doubleheader tonight in Brewster, and we thought Brewster would start more promptly, but they had an executive session, so apologies for the delay.
No problem.
But it's good to be with all of you and to see many friends here in Harwich, both on the board, and also with us tonight, but wanted to just be sure to come to board and give an update on what we've gotten done on Beacon Hill, and then what's sort of percolating for the rest of the session, and then really, as always, get good ideas from all of you. So much of what we do here in Massachusetts, so much of what the legislature does, goes to municipalities to implement, and much of what the towns want to do flows through Beacon Hill for better or sometimes worse. Probably the biggest thing we've done to date in the session is historic, a tax relief package, the largest tax relief package we've seen in a generation, a billion dollars of tax relief, lots of sort of broad pieces in there for working families. The average working family in Massachusetts would probably see an additional $1,000 back in their taxes through mechanisms like Child and Family Tax Credit, added tax credits. But a few more sort of specific items germane to Cape Codders and especially Harwich. In the tax package, we triple the Title V Septic Tax Credit from $6,000 up to $18,000. In this tax credit, this was a Senate initiative. It allows the filer to claim $4,000 a year over those four years, and this is pretty significant, especially for homeowners who may not be on a planned sewer line, but are going to need to upgrade their septic system or were cesspool to be in compliance with our nitrogen sensitive designation. The Governor, actually importantly, in her FY25 budget, files a technical fix to clarify that this tax credit includes eligible sewer connections and upgrades to systems that are within nitrogen-sensitive areas. All of Cape Cod is a nitrogen-sensitive area. So this is another chunk of help for homeowners and property owners related to our wastewater work, and I'll talk a little bit more about wastewater in a moment. The tax package also doubled the senior citizen refundable circuit breaker tax credit up to $2,400. That's important for older adults living in our communities who are worried about their property taxes. We raised the threshold in the estate tax, when the estate tax was put in place. Having a million-dollar estate was quite uncommon. Today, here in Harwich and across the Cape Mountains District, it's quite easy to have a million-dollar estate, just from frankly doing not much of anything, but having had the good fortune to have purchased a home several decades ago. So we raised that threshold to $2 million. And then, one piece that I want to highlight for the board that I championed in the Senate tax package that made it into the final law is a local option good landlord property tax exemption. So this permits municipalities to adopt a local property tax exemption for affordable real estate that is rented, rented year-round to someone who making below a certain threshold of average median income. It's actually based on a province-wide program they've had in place, gosh, for almost 20 years, that allow the town to have a property tax exemption for landlords who are renting to folks at 80% or below AMI. What now the local option allows is towns to go up to actually 200% AMI. So what we're really trying to do, and really hope that all of our towns adopt this, is provide some level of incentive for landlords who are renting year-round. We know that the market forces here, right? Where you're going to make the most money, right, is probably renting, renting by the night, you know? And I think, I believe I'm quoting this right by saying, I think it takes about 36 or 38 nights rented in the summer to equal what you can get in a whole year. So the incentives are there, but for landlords who are doing the right thing, we want to be incentivizing them to continue to be renting year-round. So this is a really, just another tool in our toolkit on housing. The Department of Revenue is putting out guidance, working on guidance right now. I'm hoping we can have that soon so towns can put this on their spring town meeting warrant. It's just another tool to really help folks, something I was proud to leave in the Senate with my colleague Lydia Edwards from East Boston. Of course, wastewater has been and remains among my top priorities. The Cape Mountains Water Protection Fund, which we established in 2018, has been a smashing success. It's been more successful than I expected, and actually, the Town of Harwich now has received $12.5 million in other people's money to help reduce the cost of these very costly sewer, sewer projects. You know, the fund has been very robust and successful. So in the first few years of the fund, $82 million in other people's money, funneled by this 2.75% room occupancy, has gone to the fund, benefiting towns like Harwich and most towns across the Cape. But in part because of the presence of the fund, and then also DEP action on Title V regulations and instituting this nitrogen-sensitive area designation, has meant that more towns are proceeding with projects than we expected. And now, the cost of those projects, in part driven by inflation, is much steeper than when we crafted the fund. When we crafted the fund, we were estimating about around $70 million a year in projects that'll be listed on the SRF, that then would receive a subsidy from the Cape Mountains Water Protection Fund. In 2024, I think we had over $600 million in municipal projects from Cape Cod and the SRF. That is good news, right? We have long delayed on wastewater. I have a friend on the, I think, the Water, Wastewater Commission here, and they found a letter to Harwich at some point in the 80s, probably predating my own existence, you know, from the federal government being like, "Dear Harwich, like, we will pay for 90% of your sewer." Our predecessors didn't take advantage of those opportunities. I certainly wish they did, but really trying to continue to bring more resources into this fund. The fund is very healthy and robust and strong, but given the demand, you know, if we don't bring more resources in the fund, it may be hard to maintain that 25% subsidy. When we created the law, there was no sort of guarantee in what the subsidy would be, but I think we've tried to keep it at 25% because we really want to give an incentive and a real help to our towns. So we're thinking creatively about how we do that for the 2024 projects. We believe that there's, I've been working with Lieutenant Governor on this, there's bipartisan infrastructure law dollars that we can tap into to keep that 25% subsidy. But from 2025 to the end of the decade, we estimate we'll need an additional $292 million in resources to help subsidize our wastewater projects. We're probably going to have to get at that in chunks and bites. One avenue may be an environmental bond bill that we'll take up in 2025. $292 million is a pretty hefty amount to get. Environmental bond bills range around $2 billion. So, you know, even if I were the Senate President and Sarah Peake were the Speaker, probably unlikely that Cape Cod would get a sixth of all those resources, but maybe we can get 50 million or 100 million. I think we're looking at other revenue sources into the fund, looking at the rate. There's also the possibility for the island towns to join the fund. If the island towns join the fund, it would really significantly increase the pot of money into this fund that's available. They also have projects and necessary projects they need to move forward on. So exploring a whole host of avenues to keep this spigot of resources for wastewater coming to all of our towns, but, you know, taxpayers in Harwich would feel very good about the $12.5 million that y'all were able to receive and more to come. And then, the biggest issue, you know, on Beacon Hill, in addition, we'll do the budget. I think the numbers you'll see from the Governor on Chapter 70 on local aid, it's an increase to local aid. I expect that will, hopefully, we'll see that come out in the budget. I do want to note that revenues, revenues are sort of a bit more constricted than they were, and there's sort of two factors going on here. The economy in Massachusetts is quite robust and quite strong. Unemployment is low, GDP is good. But during the pandemic and its aftermath, we had a real glut of revenue. Revenue increased 6%, 7% in several years. You know, we basically had a big party as the pandemic waned, whether that was, you know, in restaurants or on Wall Street. So those revenues were coming into the state. The other piece that happened, of course, was a pretty unprecedented amount of federal resources and relief dollars. Those are receding, and revenues coming into the state general fund are not staying. You know, they're going back to sort of a normal phase of about 2%. This has been described to me as almost like a hangover, right, from that pandemic revenue we had. So it's feeling like a more constricted budget, even though the fundamentals of our economy are strong. We've never had more money in our rainy day fund than we have, you know, right now, $8 billion. But it does mean more constricted resources. The Governor made mid-year spending cuts and really has worked to plug what's near- The governor made mid-year spending cuts and really has worked to plug what's nearly a billion dollar hole in this year's budget, again, because of this sort of revenue hangover, if you will. So I, I am encouraged that local aid has stayed stronger than the governor in Chapter 70, and our commitment to the Student Opportunity Act remains, which are really crucial for municipal programs. I think our ability to deliver on, you know, other resources, earmarked local priorities, priorities will probably be more constricted in this budget, perhaps in the next budget cycle, but again, the fundamentals of our economy are strong. So in addition to the budget, though, the biggest thing on the plate in Beacon Hill, the governor's top priority is housing. My top priority is housing, has always been since, since I ran in 2016. The governor filed a $4.1 billion Affordable Homes Act. This is a very significant unprecedented package for housing. It's nearly triple the size of our traditional bond bills, a whole host of resources for supportive housing, low income housing tax credits, other, other traditional programs that we have relied on. The governor, though, really has filed a bill that takes into account the needs of Cape Codders and islanders, and there's real two, there's two crucial policy pieces that we support and that we're working to get into the final bill. One relates to the ability of a local option transfer fee. This is putting a transfer fee at a certain threshold of real estate as is proposed on Nantucket or in Provincetown. It's a transfer fee on, on real estate transactions over $2 million. Other communities have put forward home rule petitions for transfer fees at $1 million. The governor proposes this local option bill. This is really critical and really important for us. When you look at all the costs that Joe was enumerating in, in his budget presentation, we don't have a steady revenue stream for housing and especially for housing, year round middle, middle income housing. If you look at where we're going in this housing crisis, and you can really see in the extremities of the region, which I represent, you know, on Nantucket, they're talking about needing to subsidize housing for people who make up to 200%, 240% of their median income. On Martha's Vineyard, all six towns who rarely work, work in concert together teamed up to propose a housing bank that's funded by this transfer fee. Provincetown is taking a whole host of initiatives related to lease to local programs, exploring year round deed restrictions. Municipalities in Edgar Town and Troire are talking about building and owning housing for their municipal workers. All of this costs a ton of money, and there's no real funding stream, particularly for that middle income housing, right? So this is where the transfer fee is going to kind of come in. Again, a revenue source that is not sort of based on, on the property tax rate, that I think is really going to be essential. And the fact that the governor proposed a local option transfer fee is very significant politically. This is a priority for Boston Mayor Michelle Wu, a priority for State Representative Sarah Peake. We are fortunate to have one more year with her, and this is really something we're trying to get done. So I'm really urging all the towns that I represent to consider putting a local option transfer fee, home rule petition on your warrant in the spring to continue to show momentum on this issue, that this is a real tool. And then when we have the local option transfer fee, then, then you can bring this forward. There's lots of support, you know, for this in the town and across the region, and even some of the opposition that we're seeing sort of statewide from some folks in the real estate community and development community. You don't see that here, actually, which, which is really encouraging. So I think take a look at this, but when you look at money and you look at resources, you know, the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund was probably the biggest thing we could do for wastewater. This local option transfer fee on housing is going to be probably the biggest thing we can do, and I want the communities that I represent to be well positioned to take advantage of those dollars as soon as you're able to. Then the second major policy thrust for the governor in the governor's bill, which is very exciting, the governor proposes a seasonal communities designation, essentially an acknowledgement that what communities like ours face from a housing needs perspective is different than a gateway city or a large city or a suburban community or even a rural town. And so this acknowledgement is very important. The governor essentially proposes sort of the scaffold, the scaffolding, right? You know, there shall be a seasonal communities designation. Representative Sarah Peake and I and others in the delegation with housing advocates and developers and realtors are working to, to flesh out what that looks like. So very much welcome, welcome ideas from the town. You know, what tools do you wish you had from the state or you were able to implement that would make a difference on housing? And then the other piece that, that's out there, and if you attended MMA, you may have received a preview of this, the governor's filed a municipal empowerment act, a bill to give more flexibility for communities. Again, very eager to hear, what else would you like to have? What other tools would you like to have in your toolkit? So, so that, that's also what's coming, but, you know, the housing crisis is, you know, this has been a crisis for over 20 years, but the pandemic really put this problem on steroids. Even, you know, in Harwich itself, from 26, you know, from 2016 to 2023, median home price increased 97%, right, from about $380,000 to $750,000. You know, what that means for, you know, especially Harwich residents and Cape Codders of my generation and younger is that increasingly, we are just priced out of being able to have any hope of being able to afford a home here. I'm in that boat, right? I'm, I'm now at the point where, you know, look, I should have bought something pre-pandemic, and I didn't, and, and, you know, I, I joke, but, you know, my housing strategy is like, okay, like, I need like a husband who makes a good, good six-figure salary, and then maybe we can figure this out. So if you have suggestions, let me know. You know, but, but that's not a, that's not a, that's not, that's not how a community can sustain and thrive from a year round perspective. And I can assure you, living on the outer Cape, representing the islands, that this problem is only going to get worse for our lower Cape communities and our mid-Cape communities. So I'm really encouraged to see the steps that this town is, is taking on housing. I'm excited about some proposals I know that are coming, you know, and really encourage this board to support those proposals as much as possible. The scale and scope of what we need to do to sustain ourselves as a year round community, we can do it, but it's much bigger than I think folks realize. And if you are fortunate to live in a home and own a home, I don't, I don't think, you know, I think folks may not appreciate how steep of a challenge it now is. So I just want to thank the board for that. Welcome your good ideas, and then of course, really just want to end and acknowledge all the incredible service of Sarah Peake, who's been our state representative for now going on 18 years. She has served Harwich and all the lower and the outer Cape incredibly well. To have someone with her skill and kindness and talent to rise the echelons that she has in the House of Representatives has meant very real tangible, important things for our community. The issues that Cape Codders and islander, islanders face are very much at the table and on the front burner on Beacon Hill, and that is thanks most, that is thanks to Sarah Peake more than anyone else. So just want to acknowledge her service. You know, excited, hopefully we'll see some good people run for the seat and work in partnership with us and, you know, glad to answer any and all questions that you may have, especially creative ideas, tools you wish you had. You know, how do we just make it a little easier for this town to conduct its business and for Cape Codders to make a good life in Harwich?
Thank you, and you two are a fabulous asset to us, and we are gonna...
I'm, I'm not going anywhere, don't worry.
I know, I was, it's difficult to accept that Sarah wants to actually have some time to herself.
Well deserved, but yeah, when she told me, it was, I was like, I got a little teary-eyed, I'll admit.
So members of the board, do you have any questions? Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I get to where I'm really getting to, I appreciate Senator Seer being here. He's been a really big advocate in helping the sewer ring discussion, and so is Sarah. So I just want to recap where we are, because I'm the representative here for the Clean Waters Board in Barnstable. I want to assure everybody in the public that it's not that they're walking away and we're, we're holding a bag of some sort, that we are getting fully funded for the things that we had adopted previously.
Correct.
You don't necessarily see them here because they get booked at the state level as a deduction, which is probably why you looked a little quizzical as our finance director back there. There's no big check that gets delivered.
And if you need checks, we could, you know.
Yeah.
You probably should have done big checks for this, because it's like probably the biggest money that anyone's ever gotten, but clearly haven't been thinking about promoting ourselves.
But within that context, since we adopted all this and since we moved forward, and Harwich was fourth or fifth, depending on how you want to characterize where Orleans came in, in terms of what we were doing, so I'm pretty proud of that. But the DEP immensely changed the goalposts. It's almost as if they put it on another football field.
Yep.
And it's, I don't want anybody to misunderstand this, it's not just purely an expense side problem, which it is, because asphalt's going up, pipe's going up, I mean, we're not alone because the whole country's rebuilding things. That's become a daunting problem by itself, but the revenue projections, because we, we had the intelligence to hire a financial advisor at the county level, you know, to go over what the projections would look like, and our, we fought pretty hard to make sure that this covered everybody. As a matter of fact, the, the islands folks have been sitting in on all of these discussions, presupposing they were going to be part of this thing. But it's also the projections of the revenue receipts that aren't meeting exactly what we had hoped that they would, so the convergence, well, it's actually the divergence of those things is, is hurting us. I know you've sent several letters, and I'm pretty sure that you were on the letter giving list. Just wanted to make everybody aware that the whole Cape could really use a robust discussion on Beacon Hill about that, because we're not arguing against not fixing the environment, because we all, we all know that we need to do this and we want to do this, but the, the threshold that we're going to have to pass, because Harwich, and I don't know if you're hearing this in other communities, some communities do their sewer ring on the basis of maintenance. The people who get the sewer system pay for their part of the sewer system. Harwich is a repeat, whatever we build a new phase, all of us pay for the new phase. So by the time you get to Phase 5, Phase 6, you're, even if you were covered as a sewer ring in Phase 1, you're paying for that also.
Yep.
So it's critically important for us as a community and for anybody else who funds it like that to understand that we can't just sit back in our laurels and say, wow, we did pretty well, we did all the Phase 1 and Phase 2, well, let's go home, because we've got all these other phases coming up, and the money is going to be pretty tight this year and maybe next year coming from the county in terms of what we can expect other than interest reductions. So we really need your help.
Yeah, so these, thank you, Don, for those calls. These conversations are, are already ongoing. I, I've spoken to the Lieutenant Governor about, gosh, I think we had, we had our, we had our first wastewater conversation on January 19th last winter, because it was my birthday, I remember talking to her on my birthday about this issue, and we've had multiple conversations since. And, and really, I think there's an acknowledgement that, one, that Cape communities continue to need help, but also the action from DEP and the updated regulations now do come with, with a significant additional mandate. And look, I, I think, I think it's still very much the right thing to do. You know, first and foremost, you know, stewardship of our natural, particularly our marine environment is, is pretty essential, not only just as, as good environmentalists, but, but this is the, the lifeblood of our, our economy, right? People come to Harwich and across the region for our pristine marine environment. Don't tell them it's not that pristine, right? 98% of estuaries and abeyments on Cape Cod are impaired, most of our ponds and freshwater lakes, you know, are too, right? So, so we've got a real incentive there. But then also wastewater infrastructure is how you can more affordably build the year round housing that we're going to need to have to sustain ourselves from, from a year round perspective. So I really see the wastewater piece as a, a real two for it, and why I've, you know, really, it's been my, my signature accomplishment, the creation of the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. It's probably the biggest thing that Sarah Peake and I will do, certainly in Sarah's tenure and however long I have this job. The fund, the revenue into the fund is, is robust, is sort of what we sort of expected it to be, around 20 million, now kind of going to 21, 22 million. Just the demand, though, and that gap in the demand is so significant, and, and that, you know, we're not talking about a couple million dollars, we're talking about, you know, for the rest of the decade, $292 million. So how we get at that, I think we're thinking creatively. Certainly, this municipal, this municipal empowerment act could be a vehicle for us to, to make some change. There's some thought, you know, do we, do we increase the percentage on the surcharge? Do we allow communities to, to have other ways that you bring in other people's money into the fund? There's been active conversation, and I've worked very hard to make sure that island communities, one, could have a seat at the table, which I represent these communities, two, could come into the fund pretty easily, they can do so with a vote on their select board, and then three, you know, allowing them sort of the space and time to figure out if they want in. There is a persistent skepticism among, among islanders on both islands about getting lumped in with Cape Cod, and, and there's, there's a whole history that kind of substantiates that, but I think if you look at the administration of this fund, how successful it's been, you know, the fact that towns as diverse in needs, you know, as, as Barnstable and as Wellfleet are pretty happy and are getting resources, are, I think are encouraging the island towns to come, and the island towns coming into this fund is probably part of the way that we, we, we solve this problem in part, but this remains a real high priority, and frankly, the, Sarah's announced retirement, for me, has really even spurred more urgency on this matter, because I know, you know, our, our ability, we'll, we'll have, we'll have a learning curve and a rookie for whoever's doing this work, you know, on Beacon Hill after her. Representative Dylan Fernandez, also, who's sort of the number two in the delegation in the House, is running for state senate, so he's not, you know, hopefully he'll be in the senate with me, but he won't do as much, much good in the House, so, so really trying to figure this out. But I think, you know, when we initially created the fund, it was like, all right, here's, here's one revenue source, here's a solution, you know, here's what it is, and it's done, it's done what it was designed to do. Now the question is, how do we bring in additional resources or other sources? I think part of that's going to be the bond authorization I talked about, which wouldn't happen until 2025, but this is, this is pretty, pretty high on our list. I'm getting together with Lieutenant Governor again on Tuesday, next Tuesday, to talk about this, so, you know, we're, we're working it hard, we've got a really good track record here, and again, there's even more urgency given, given the change in, in representation we'll have. Is that helpful, Don?
Yeah.
And thank you for, I should say, thank you for all your leadership on this and everyone's work. I know this has been not easy.
Thanks, Julian, I really appreciate it, but yet, I just want to make sure everybody understands, I don't want to get any more granular than this. When we started out meeting with the board, there was a certain movement within, ooh, I don't know, three towns that we already built ours, so we should get all the money first, and then whatever new money comes in, you guys can get it. We were adamant that that's not the way it's going to work, and to give yourselves some more confidence to have, address this in Beacon Hill. Everybody gets something, the way this is set up. It wasn't fair to try to drain it down, to get, have the first people that came through the door get the money, and then the rest of us were stuck not being able to pay for it. But nonetheless, the actuariales are not real good right now, so in, in terms of what projects are, are coming to us versus what revenue we have, so...
The, the number of projects we have vastly sort of eclipses what we expected. In part, to the towns' credit, y'all have finally moved on this issue, which, you know, for the last 36, 37, whatever years, whenever someone got that letter, Harwich got that letter, you know, you hadn't, so credit to the towns, the cost of these things has gone up, and then it's not sort of insignificant, and DEP has added, you know, new requirements that has increased the cost. I think that's the hook where we get in part the state to say, hey, you know, you've got to have some skin in the game. We've basically been solving this problem. You know, the fund basically solves our problem with other people's money who are coming to visit here, which is great, but where are the resources kind of coming from the state? So that, you're right, that gap between, I just want to be clear, it, it's the gap between basically the expected revenue in the fund, which is continuing to come into the fund as expected broadly, but the gap, and then it's a gap between that and then the overall sort of need and cost of these projects as they are today in 2024. We're really aware of that gap, and I think we're going to do everything we can to, to close it, and as you said, really to work, you know, work to make sure that, that towns are really made whole here and everyone really benefits. And I've been really encouraged to see the fund has operated that way to date, as, as the architect of this thing, having written the statute and kind of designed it in this way, and, and it's, and, and, and the proof in that is the fact that the island towns are seriously considering joining. If they, if this was not working well, there's no way in hell the islands would come in, so we're on it, and I do want to just, you know, I want to assure listeners and voters here and proper taxpayers that, that this already is a pretty significant subsidy we may be able to deliver, and our aim is to continue to deliver more so we can get this done. So this is not a problem in, in 30 years.
And it's not a crisis right now, but these folks are going to be talking about building something new themselves, and everyone is across the Cape. The fact that these people in the islands keep showing up to meetings is a testament to the fact that we, early on, decided to make this fair so that it wasn't just a mechanism for the people who built their sewers five, 10 years ago.
Yeah, of course.
They get money back, but there's time now. When you run out of time, then it becomes a crisis.
Yeah, we're on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you for serving the board.
Jeff?
Just wanted to say, nice to meet you. Thank you for being here, and it's, information has been incredibly useful for me, so I just thank you for all your, all your hard work and everything you do for us down here in Harwich.
You're most welcome, and it's good to see you in person.
Yeah, thank you.
But, you know, and of all of you, when we talk as needed, we try to be as accessible as possible and, and, you know, like, also stay out of your way, but, but any and all sort of ideas or needs, we actually, before this meeting, I said to my staff, hey, how many home rule petitions does Harwich have? The Cape and Islands towns have a real... The Cape Nines towns have a real habit of filing home rule petitions. Nantucket leads the way with 13 or 14 or 15 a year. But Harwich, actually, you don't, you don't have any pending home rule petitions in the legislature, which is a good thing. So my gratitude for that because it can take a lot of staff time and work. But thank you, Jeff, I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
No, just thank you for the update. Appreciate it.
Thank you. It's, do you have a call? Yeah, go ahead. And thank you, Julian, it's great information.
Hi, Stan Pestusak, I live here in Harwich, in East Harwich on Nor East Drive. And I'm glad you brought up about the septic credit. It's a big benefit. I mean, it's gone from a max of $6,000 to $18,000 potential. And it's a big benefit for those of, who are hooking up in 2023 and all those new ones that are getting an exemption and extending a year later. However, myself and a number of other people who immediately did our hookups in 2022 and actually my certificate of compliance was two weeks away from the first of the year, I will lose out at least $6,500 on the potential credit because it's not retroactive. So I just wanted to make that point because it, I already did my taxes, I already did my credit. And no, it's not retroactive.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to make that point, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
We may want to, the governor's filed a technical amendment to this. Be interesting to see what latitude we'd have with doing any of this retroactive. I'm not, I'm not.
I mean, it's in the, it's in the law right now. I mean, it's not.
So the, but the governor filed an amendment to her budget to clarify, so the law currently says sub $18,000.
Right.
And it's, it's really only for Title V upgrades. It does not include sewer connections currently in the law. The governor has proposed in her budget making a technical fix to include those sewer connections, which is good. I fought to get this done in the.
Well, maybe I misunderstood it because I know the credit itself did include sewer connections, the original one for 6,000. It says any sewer connection.
Oh, it may.
Required by, required by towns or.
Oh, the towns, okay.
And a resident, it couldn't be part-timers.
No, 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 not part-timers. But we should look and see if we can, because the governor's filed this clarification, it gives me an avenue when we actually get the budget to further clarify retroactive. We'll take a look, maybe we can do it.
Okay. Just wanted to bring it away.
It's a good idea. Thank you.
Good point.
And thank you for connecting so eagerly. Maybe next time, wait.
Well, no, I don't have any questions. I just thank you for all your time and energy and I'm sure we'll be reaching out more and more as we look at our numbers.
Yeah, really welcome ideas and thoughts on this Municipal Empowerment Act. What do you wish you could do?
Right.
I mean, basically the bill now says, all right, you can increase your local option meal tax, your remarcation, what else there? And then again, this housing package with the seasonal community destination, what would you like to be able to do there? And then, and then again, the recommendation from us to really consider putting a transfer fee home rule on the warrant for the spring town meeting. One, it will help us build momentum and show that people really want this. And then two, you'll be well-prepared once we actually, you know, put this in place, right? You know, when we bring these, these new initiatives, sometimes towns can take towns a little while to get up to speed and then you're missing out on that money.
So on that, do you have any kind of template or anything that you could share?
We do, I would encourage you, and we can send this to you folks, to look at, I think the Nantucket home rule petition is the most extensive and well-done as far as, as far as the exemptions that exist in here. The Nantucket home rule also focuses on the buyer, not the seller. I think that's really important, right? And so many of our residents, you know, have accrued a tremendous amount of value on their homes and look, and they saw they can benefit from those. But I think the seller provisions, the exemptions for a number of entities, first-time home buyers as well, really makes a lot of sense. Their threshold is higher, right? Because, you know, the median home price in Nantucket is $3 million. You know, I want to consider sort of like a lower threshold, but we can share that template.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I know that some, some organizations have been working to work on this. I know CDP's been working with some towns to consider this. But I think our goal is to have, on the Cape, we've had, so Nantucket passed the first home rule on this, then Province Town Truro, Wellfleet, Orleans has all passed home rules, Eastham and Chatham, I think, no, Chatham did. Orleans is considering now, Chatham has one. And who else is considering this? Barnstable potentially, all six towns in Martha's Vineyard have done this in addition to Nantucket. So, you know, you're in pretty good company. And unlike off Cape where there's sort of a lot of opposition to this, there's broad agreement among, you know, a number of stakeholders on this, even in the community. So just being ready to kind of go and pounce once that revenue source comes, that's, that's what you want to be able to do. There's also kind of questions too about like where that money sort of flows and goes and we're really thinking about how you design this to be most effective and efficient. Towns and government is quite plodding and slow and real estate and building, well, real estate is quite fast. Building is of course someplace in the middle, but I think we want to, we want to make sure that towns are able to seize these opportunities and frankly, to be able to move forward at that, the scale that frankly, I think we're going to need to do. So we'll be sure to share something.
Great, that'd be great. Thank you and thanks for your time.
And apologies again for.
No problem.
Brewster kept me late.
We'll blame Brewster. We'll go on to, on that note, a discussion on wastewater.
So Madam Chair, members of the board, as we have our wastewater superintendent, Dan Pelletier, come up with our project manager from GHD, Jeff Gregg. The three of us are here to present on the Phase Three of what we now call the Watershed Management Plan based on the DEP changes. And so we're going to talk about the Phase Three construction, the borrowing, all of that, and also give a precursor to community forum outreach that the superintendent and I are working on. And, excuse me, as you'll see later on in your agenda, there's a recommendation for a contract to bring GHD in specifically as our construction services engineering firm. So with that, I'm happy to turn it over to Dan and Jeff for their presentation.
Right. Good evening.
Thank you for having us. So we're here before you tonight to give you guys an update as to where we stand with Phase Three, project cost estimates, bidding, construction. And like Joe said, the meeting we're planning for the 13th.
Over the shoulder.
Wherever you want me to chime in, do you want me to go?
Yeah, you go ahead.
Okay. So one of the things we wanted to talk about is we have been working with Dan on laying out what the sewer service area is. I believe the map is.
Yeah, we're going to share the, so there's a map that's showing on the projector here. Once we wrap up with the slideshow, we're actually going to have Jamie pull up the live GIS map so you guys can actually see that in operation tonight. But included on that map, you know, we had identified the sewer service areas, the sewer service type for each of the properties, the sewer sheds, as well as the ad alternates for the bidding, which we'll be talking about in just a second.
So it's, I apologize, it's a little hard to see in this figure here, but essentially we've split the, we've split the whole service area, which we are now calling Phase Three, into two contracts. So we have a Contract One, which builds off primarily your existing Phase Two area. This is Route 39 and then part of Pleasant Bay Road. It goes pretty much up just, just short of the border. And then Contract Two area is primarily over by Standish Woods and the western portion of Pleasant Bay Road as you head out just past Round Cove Road. And in that, what we did is we then, as we, and we'll get into some of the detail of how we looked at it a little, a little later, we, as part of the design process, looked at the different types of sewer systems that were going to be going in front of each of the homes that we're proposing. So you've probably heard a lot of this before, but there's gravity and then there's pressure sewer, which is essentially for grinder pumps. But we knew that there were also situations where due to topography, you may have a house that could be, has gravity sewer running in front of it, but because they're set low from the road or way back from the road, they may actually still have to pump. Or if we had limited, we went through septic records, but if there was limited information, we might not be able to tell exactly. And there were some cases where it was close, they could possibly get there by gravity, but some of that's really going to be determined in the field when the homeowner might make the determination, yes, I could replumb, or if I had my lateral over on this side, it will work, but if they are trying to avoid a lot of things at their property, like a pool or patio or things like that, they may also affect their service connection. So we tried our best to lay that out. So the areas in blue are anticipated to be a gravity sewer connection. Then there are areas in yellow or, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, I was going to say that.
They flipped the colors on.
We changed the colors since this presentation was put together for last week's packet. So we updated them to green, yellow, and red. So why don't we save that for the map?
Okay.
So we don't, we can give the right colors.
Jeff's having an awful night tonight. Definitely coming out of that.
Thank you, Michael.
And one of the other things that we wanted to point out is that as part of the discussion, we've identified some potential bid alternate areas. So we've tried to flag those areas on the map as well because based on the discussion that you were having earlier about costs and obviously there's a lot of projects and nothing seems to ever get any less expensive. We are trying to manage the bids prior to going to bidding. So we identified some areas and that's part of what we wanted to have this discussion for. So I think with that, we'll move on to the, the transition of the costs. So what we presented on this table here is, I believe the last time that we presented in front of the board was probably.
October, right?
No, it was actually last March, I think. So if I'm not mistaken, I think we did.
You heard you go.
Yeah, so we did a presentation of a 60% in March. So that was this first column on the far right. Then when we did the SRF submittal, which was in October, we had met with Dan and Town Administrator Joe and talked about where we thought that, where the project thought we would end up. And then as we finalized design and we had to, you know, make some adjustments, go through, refine our costs, we came up in this last column. So the bottom line is when we were looking at costs for the overall project and the preliminary costs, we were just shy of the $50 million and now we're just over the $50 million. We've been trying to balance those costs. I don't, should I just go through the presentation and then we'll deal with questions and things? I imagine there's maybe questions.
Well, I guess maybe we should stop in case there's questions on cost or the concept of ad alternates.
Does anyone have a question? No, you might as well go ahead.
Okay.
I would just point before we jump in, one of the big differences or escalations in cost between the March meeting and then the subsequent cost updates. You recall when we had met back in March, we'd made a decision to pick up those streets that we were going by that we might not necessarily need to for nitrogen purposes. So there are, you know, additional streets that were added after that first March meeting.
Dan.
Yeah, go ahead.
Some of those streets were bumped in Phase Two because of cost overages, correct?
Correct.
So initially planned on doing them and then we decided not to.
Correct.
Thank you.
So this, the next couple of slides are really just to kind of point out some of the areas that we're, we're looking at targeting right now and the reason why we had identified them. So in Contract One, we identified Victoria Road. It's a, it's a small road, small number of properties, and it's proposed to be pressure sewer. And it was an area that would be easy to partition for a contractor. So that was one of the reasons why we identified Victoria Road. Then we identified Old Carriage and Huckleberry Path on Sadie's Way, which are off of 39. And the reason we had identified those is primarily they're in the upper and lower Muddy Creek subwatersheds, which we had essentially gotten to a point where we could achieve the TMDLs. So it's a process of going by, picking them up, but they aren't critical to you meeting your TMDL compliance. And there are also areas where we could, you know, partition them off easily. It's not that the work couldn't be done, but that is another reason why we identified those. It might even give you some opportunity if you wanted to have further discussions about Huckleberry Path and Sadie's Way, which is right now proposed to be all low-pressure. Maybe you can, you looked at having pumping stations out there, weren't really able to find a site.
Weren't able to negotiate a site?
Yes, weren't able to negotiate.
There's viable sites, but that's something that could be revisited if perhaps that ad alternate was not included. Maybe we can find a viable pump station site or negotiate one and that street could be then done by gravity. So it's not all bad necessarily if something gets pulled out, I guess is the takeaway.
Yes, that's, that was the, thank you, David. And then Contract Two W, so we identified three locations in this contract. The first one was the tail end of Pleasant Bay, just past Elm. And again, for easy to partition for the contractors, it is primarily gravity, I mean, it's a gravity sewer, houses we picked up by gravity. We also identified Perry's Way, which is just east of Elm, and that was another easy to partition area, small number of homes. And then we looked at Walden Way, which is a combination of gravity and pressure sewer. And we elected to, to take the whole section because it would be easier to partition that than possibly run a gravity sewer that might just serve three or four homes. It was easier to kind of just look at that street as if you're going to disturb the street, you might as well do it all at once as opposed to.
In the conversation with residents who are the last, or the first property outside the sewer service area is tough, especially when it's on the same street. So if we can, in the case of Walden Way, take out that whole segment, it definitely lessens the animosity.
And can I just ask one question there?
Sure.
Were those properties also in the other phase?
No.
And so they weren't originally in.
Correct.
Phase Two that we called it?
Correct.
Okay.
And a portion of, the lower portion, I believe of Walden Way is also actually in the, I always get it mixed up, is in the.
Lower Muddy Creek.
Lower Muddy Creek watershed. That one was one where it kind of crosses over. So you get some that are in Pleasant Bay and some that are in the Muddy Creek watersheds. So, jumping to the next slide. So what we did here, there's no easy way to present all the alternates with the cost because you can basically make like 36 or whatever, you do the math of number of iterations of this plus that, you know. The biggest thing to take away is that when, as you know, as you outline your bid alternates, you have to, if you were to accept them, you have to accept them in the order that they are listed in your contract. So you put one, two, three, if you were to take and you had the funds to do all three, it's not a big deal. If you have funds to do two, you have to do the first two. So if you had enough to do one and three, you still could only do one if that was the case. So it's just something to keep in mind. When we presented this, what we decided to do is we just lined up the first alternative for each of the items. So the first column just says, hey, what's the bottom line if we don't do any of the alternates? So it's somewhere around $47 million. If you did the first alternate of both projects, your bottom line then comes to 48 million plus or minus. If you do both of the second alternates for both the projects, you're now just, you're at 49? Did I mistake?
Yeah, you get 49, too.
Sorry, it's 48, then 49. And then if, like we presented before, if you did all of the alternates, then you're And then, like we presented before, if you did all of the alternates, then you're at the 50, 51 million dollars. And that's kind of where things were looking like right now.
I would also just add for consideration, we are intending to bid both of the contracts simultaneous. So when it comes to selecting, if we're in the situation where we need to pick ad alternates, we'll be able to identify, you know, do that with both of the projects at the same time, so we can prioritize if we want to not do alternates on Contract One, so that we can award all three in Contract Two, we can make that decision.
Okay. Yeah, so we would, we would schedule for the openings. They wouldn't be, I don't think we were going to do them on the same day, probably the same week, but they'd be opened close enough together that you would have plenty of time to be able to make those decisions. And that's actually probably something that we should, at some point, discuss is what the process is to accept alternates, like is that, where that decision's made, so that we make sure we have the timing built into...
Right.
...bid opening. So if that has to come back in front of the board, we need to make sure we have sufficient time to do that.
Got it. Making notes.
And just to point out that that would, I understand that would be an important decision, and if it was a press-on time, we can always have a special meeting if you needed us to. Just sharing that. Not saying they want to do that, but...
No, and that's why if we can, if we can try to do it, we'll...
We'll work to coordinate the board's schedule with the bid opening.
Yeah.
So that we can try and get everything dialed in.
That's preferable. I'm just saying, if you get in a pinch, it's not like we couldn't do something to, to address it.
No, we appreciate that.
Michael, you got a question?
Dan, total appropriation right now from town meeting, what do we have?
50 million.
And what's the total with all alternates?
So not to confuse things any further.
Thank you.
But the total as listed in the packet with all alternates is 50,900,000. That said, that includes a 10% contingency, which is reduced to 5% when the bids are open and contracts are awarded. So we're really there. You know what I mean? We're over if you factor the 10% contingency and right at 5.
To the Town Administrator, what do we have in the sewer special stabilization?
The wastewater stabilization, special purpose as of June, excuse me, September 30th, was 1.467 million, I think.
What can we spend per year?
There's no cap on it, so it's really how the town wants to do it. The original cap was on the quantum vote, so it's really whatever the article calls for.
And this project would qualify?
It may, however, that action wouldn't be done until May 6th.
Okay, get contract signed by June 30th.
Right.
Gives us a little...
Yep. In other words, we have to do it through town meeting.
And then, one, one further question, Dan, and not to put you on the spot, you can say you're not ready to release it, but some good news to the public. Can you tell us what the dry pipe savings that you got and the water project savings that you recognized the other day?
Yes. So the dry sewer pipe was originally appropriated at 6.5 million, and the most recent cost estimate is looking right, right around 1.2, 1.3 million for that. That, again, is part of the savings that we had talked about with working with DOT under 28. The $17.5 million appropriation, which reflected the estimated $15 million water main project that was approved last year, most recent cost estimate's looking closer to 8, 8.5 million. So significant reduction on that as well, so.
I only ask, I only mention that because maybe as we go out to bid on this, we'll recognize, but it seems like we're there. And my own opinion is if we're going by these roads and not picking them up to remobilize later when DEP changes the regulations yet again, it's going to cost us three, four times the money than doing it now.
There may be another bucket, if you will. I think it may warrant another discussion with legal. As Senator Seer indicated, we got a pretty substantial principal forgiveness on the Phase Two loan. I know that we had appropriated, I believe it was 24 million. I don't know legally how, if the principal is reduced on that debt, if any of that could be used to pay for streets that were originally in Phase Two that then were subsequently bumped. So...
Thank you.
It's worth questions.
Checking, yeah. Follow up on that?
I was nodding that I agree, it's worth the conversation. Absolutely.
So in terms of the tentative schedule where we are right now, so we've submitted to SRF, we have actually received the restricted pack, which basically says that they're ready to do the loan, they're just waiting for some information primarily. I think it's really just the easement paperwork, and then for us to respond to that, but we're, I didn't want to do that yet until we have the easement work. Easements and permit finalization, we're in process. We're hoping to have that squared away by March. Looking to potential bidding for April with the idea that we'd start construction in spring, summer, fall, so late spring, summer, possibly fall for 2024, so this year. The two contracts were set at two different durations, roughly two years for the smaller one, which is the Western contract, and about two and a half years for the larger one. And then, property letter, connection letters would go out under your sort of standard process right now, which is basically after project's complete, been approved by DEP, and then I believe it's, what, two years, I think, that you have to connect with the considerations for what the board had mentioned earlier about variances and...
Extensions.
Extensions. And so what we are anticipating doing in more detail is we have a February 13th meeting at 7:00 PM to go over what the construction contracts are looking at right now, how we went through and identified sewer service and type, so how we made basically that map and how we laid out the plans. Information about how sewer stubs were located, and also how they get located during construction, and then what opportunities the property owners have to provide any input with regards to their connection. Talk about the pumping station locations, talk about the traffic control plan, which we're meeting with the police department on Thursday. And then, some of the what to expect during construction and after construction. Obviously, the town's been through it, so you know some of what to expect. It's going to be, you know, the same but a little different because it's just a different part of town. And I think with that, I don't know, Dan, if you wanted to then...
Yeah, Jamie, could you jump on to that?
I guess we could deal with any questions while they're, while that's coming up?
Yeah, and I guess I'd also just note the $50.9 million, as Senator Seer said, projects for 2024 are going to receive the 25% principal forgiveness. So that's a huge win, you know, for Phase Three.
Right. An important thing to point out. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Having said that, this is a little tickler message for you. I didn't mean to suggest that we're all going to get closed off from funding. However, the door is only open until June 30th because the Clean Waters Board has to have everything in place, forgetting about what the state does. They piggybacked on the state regulations, so everything has to be in place by June 30th, or we wait another year to actually get in line again. So while you're considering what your date times are, that's an important one to consider because you want to let the county know that, yeah, we're in, we've awarded, we're ready to go.
That June 30th deadline is the source of a lot of lack of, loss of sleep, so...
Yep. Sorry.
Madam Chair, if I could, before they launch into the map, I just want to go back to, so the event on February 13th is something that Dan and I have been working with Jeff for several weeks on. We were hoping to have announced it at your meeting last week, so we are going to make sure that we avail ourselves of any opportunities to notify property owners affected by the two construction projects. That we're having that event scheduled for next Tuesday. It's not the only event we're going to have. We're also going to be targeting something in the spring to get some seasonal homeowners that may not otherwise be aware, and in between, we may be able to rely upon a Teams meeting as well. So we're shooting for the 13th because we didn't want to go too far after this presentation tonight. We didn't want to get caught up in the school vacation week and certainly the budget process. So we're targeting February 13th. We'll have more beyond that, and certainly we'll begin the updates as we did with Phase Two through the select board meetings.
And is this scheduled to be at the community center? Just putting it out there.
Correct.
Yeah. All right, that was my question. Thank you.
So yes, February 13th, 7:00 PM, Harwich Community Center in the multi-purpose room.
Great, thanks.
All right. So I know everybody likes to just click through the landing pages when we get to a website, but I would ask everybody to just take a moment and read it because it hopefully will explain, you know, everything that's in the map that you're about to see. So we do have some general project details at the top of the page, including property count, cost estimate, watersheds we're addressing, number of parcels served. I have 636. I'm waiting for an updated hard number tomorrow from Todd, our GIS guy, so that could change by a couple parcels, but... Construction contracts, again, just identifying that we have two. An explanation of the project bidding and bid alternates. And then, maybe if you can scroll down a little bit, just quick paragraph on locating your property, and then an explanation of the parcel shading, which is also in the map once you look in. You can click right in now.
Sure.
So this is searchable, you can zoom in, find your parcel, or you can type your address in. Once you get there, just simply use the legend to determine what your sewer service property, property-specific sewer service type is. There's also boundaries that will show up a little bit better on a computer screen that identify which construction contract you're in, which sewer shed you're in, and also if you're in an ad alternate area. So this will hopefully answer a fair amount of questions.
And do you go to the water department for this site, or do you...
I have not posted the link. I just got the, it was updated at like 5:30 this afternoon, so I will be getting a URL over for the town's website, and I'll also post it on the water department's website as well.
Great, thank you.
Great tool, Dan.
That's all I got?
Yeah.
Great tool.
It's a great tool. It's a great way to get that information out, too, for, you know, and tell people, check that out, and also the meeting, and then...
I'm hoping too, this will ultimately evolve into a map for the rest of the whole sewer project, so people can go in, search, see what phase they're in, what years they're expected to be constructed, hopefully answer a lot of questions.
Yeah, that's great. Excellent. Any other questions on that? Any additional questions for... No, nobody has any? Okay.
Hearing none?
Thank you, good.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. It's a lot of hard work, so we get it. You guys make it look easy, but there's a lot that goes in it, so thanks. Vote to designate the in-person, the item D. Here comes Emily.
Yeah, Emily. Well, Emily's coming up.
Good evening, Emily Mitchell, Town Clerk. I'll be brief. I know it's been a long evening for you all. So the state law currently requires towns to offer in-person early voting for all state and federal elections. This evening, I'm asking you to set both the in-person early voting hours and location associated with the March 5th presidential primary. The law really sets the parameters. You are required to begin in-person early voting on Saturday, February 24th, and to end in-person early voting on Friday, March 1st. For a community of our size, the law requires six hours to be offered on that weekend, so February 24th or 25th, and then for us to offer that during our full business hours that Monday through Friday. So you're sort of limited in your flexibility. I've recommended that we allocate all six weekend hours on Saturday, February 24th, and proposing to offer that from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We would then not have any in-person early voting hours Sunday, the 25th, and we'd be required to have it our full business hours, Monday through Friday, 8:30 AM to 4:00 PM. So that's my recommendation. And then in terms of location, I am proposing to keep the locations we've had for the last few elections based out of the town clerk's office, and then setting up kind of makeshift polling locations, booths, and checkout tables in the first-floor lobby. So that is my recommendation. If you have any questions, we'll feedback.
Great, thank you, Emily. Can I get a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that we accept the in-person early, early voting recommendation by our town clerk as presented in our packet.
Great. I'm just going to name the, just so the public knows.
Sure.
So that'll be Saturday, February 24th, 2024, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Sunday, February 25th, there will be no in-person early voting hours. And then Monday through Friday, February 26th, 2024 to March 1st, 2024, it will be 8:30 AM to 4:00 PM.
All at town hall.
All at town hall.
I'll second if somebody has not.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then our discussion on the proposed river herring harvest.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's been a busy one for you?
It has.
On the board? I'm Brad Chase. I work for the State Division Marine Fisheries. I live here in town as well, and Dawn is the new Department of Natural Resources Director.
Yep, Director of Natural Resources, the Shellfish Constable, and the Assistant Harvest Master here within the town. A pleasure to be in front of you.
So Dawn and I discussed it, and I guess I'll give you a quick summary. We were here a year ago with Heinz Proft.
Yeah.
Proposing a river herring harvest based on an approved river herring harvest plan. And so it's, last year, the discussion was to wait a year to see how things went. The run was at 291,000 last year. This year, went up to 529,000, so it increased substantially. And so it's really the choice of the town of Harwich, if you folks want to have a harvest, and when you want to have a harvest. Dawn, I think, wants to describe a situation where he feels that it'd be difficult to implement a harvest for this coming spring. At the same time, it's a choice of the Board of Selectmen. I think from the Division Marine Fisheries standpoint, we'd like to see a harvest at some point. We think it'd be good for the residents of the town of Harwich, but it has to be feasible, it has to work.
Sure.
So we just, we're here to support whatever the town would like to do, to answer questions. I did provide a presentation last year. I don't know if you want to do it tonight, or if you just want to move things along at this point.
I think we'll just move things along, yeah.
Okay, so I think we could answer questions. One proposal I'd like to discuss is the consideration of having the town establish a herring commission. And that would help, I think, Dawn, in the future, would help the whole idea of having a harvest, managing a run, maintaining a run. And many towns have this. Sometimes they're multiple town commissions. I think it would be a good tool for the town of Harwich, so I'd like to see that discussed. And I'd like to, you know, hear from Dawn as well on his thoughts.
Sure.
I feel like it's asking a lot for a two-month period ahead.
It is, to say the least. I like the aspect of it being a tool, you know, for the future. I think what's necessary for this department is not just, you know, a tool that we can go and purchase, it's not another chainsaw, but it's a structure, you know, and the bones to what the department needs. You know, we wear many hats. In my role, we've heavily in the past have, you know, focused with the effort of volunteers and volunteer work. Currently, to this standing, there's only one part-time volunteer within the department and myself, you know, so be able to take on something as delicate as the herring runs are. It's something that shouldn't be taken lightly. You need, you need good structure to be able to push ourselves, you know, forward in the right path. And, you know, in doing so, I would just request, you know, a bit more time for the department to be able to structure, you know, good communication and good, you know, intentions with Brad, who is an incredible person to be, you know, next to with his book of knowledge and, you know, like-minded tribal councils and, you know, environmental police and every aspect of enforcement for something so substantial like this.
Joe, did you want to make a...
I did, I wanted to follow on the Director's presentation. Dawn and I met a few weeks ago to discuss this. I asked him his recommendation. It's exactly as he's presented tonight. And the thing I would want to bear out and support of our Director of Natural Resources is that not only is Dawn following a legend and someone that built the entire system, but with the retirement of Heinz Proft, many of the volunteers, except for one or two, have also retired. So it's... So, it's not the same structure that we inherited, certainly not that he's been able to build on. So, to time this with that would, I think, would be unfortunate. With regard to the herring commission concept, certainly worth analyzing and presenting. I don't know that it's covered under the topic tonight. I wasn't aware of that part of it. So, you might have to have a more definitive conversation about that. But I want to put out there that I support our Director and his recommendations, just given where he is right now with the, with the department and the operations.
Right. No, I read your information and it sounded like it was a lot to take on at this point. So, do other board members have questions, comments? Michael?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Don, for being here and for your memo. Brad, thank you for all the work that you've done on behalf of the town of Harwich. Really, there's, there's very few communities that have this ability. So, you know, we had a pretty in-depth conversation with Heinz and Brad last year. I'd kind of like to know, you know, even if it's a pilot for a month with limited hours to gauge interest, I guess really the question in bold here is how do we get to yes?
Sure.
I don't want to just keep pushing this off a year after year after year after year. So, what are we going to do to get volunteers or get you the help without throwing another employee at it?
Sure.
How are we going to get to yes?
So, I think it's, you know, it's a plan that's presented abruptly between now and this season. I think that if it were to be something that were to go forth now, it's a recipe for disaster. I think setting the example for bordering towns and being able to start the conversation with bordering towns and be able to work together in an effort like this, this isn't just a Harwich project. This is teamwork coming together, you know. So, I think that those pieces haven't been put together to my knowledge. I think in the efforts of putting together a commission and us, you know, sitting down and discussing more in detail, I think that that's what is going to get us from not just pushing things off, but an answer. And I more so than anybody want, you know, a sustainable harvest, but it, it takes a strong community to be able to have a strong professional execution of a plan for something that's natured.
Just to further, you know, one of the suggestions that was made in the packet was to only concentrate on the West Reservoir.
Sure.
And I'm definitely a fan of not opening up every run and having to have commissioners or volunteers at every run.
Sure.
And then the policing part of this is interesting because we always did police that herring run. So, I think some of the structure is already in place. And you cited some environmental concerns and being good stewards. I certainly would support at least the attempt to try and get open for a limited, even if it's two weeks at a dollar a permit, at the West Reservoir, to get something off the ground instead of waiting another year.
Sure.
I did talk to a dozen or so residents today in regards to it, and they said, you know, they'd be happy to volunteer. One of them happens to be a tribal member. Sorry if you're watching tonight and I'm offering you, but, but there are people that, that I think really want to see this happen. How many? Who knows? I know as a kid, collecting herring and going down to Red River Beach and fishing was a very popular thing, and there was a fair amount of people that did it. We don't have that level of beach fishermen anymore. And the more people that I talked to from the older generation, whether it be food or fertilizer or whatever they may use it for, they were pretty excited about it. And certainly by some of their levels of even walking, I don't think that we're going to get a whole lot of problem out of that. So, I would encourage you to, as quickly as you can, work with maybe some of the other surrounding communities and for this board to work on getting some volunteers so that we don't let this go on the wayside. It'd be great if Harwich was the first town on the Cape that did this. And I do agree with you, should do it right or not at all.
Yeah. It's a risk and reward. You know, I think that this is what this is.
But on a low level is where I'm going. I'm not saying, let's open all the runs. Let's not have the environmental pieces that you're concerned about. But let's open this in one location and see how it goes.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question, Mike? Are you concerned for this coming season?
I'm very interested in it, but I don't think I have the votes for that.
Right.
And I do certainly respect Don's, where Don is with, with volunteers and Joe's recommendation as well, so.
And that's my position. I'm disappointed we can't make it happen this year because I think we have the fish. But it's Don's first year. You've got a lot on your plate, so I really understand that. I would suggest if people think it's a good idea to maybe have a one-day opening to let people have some fish to cook. And I know my staff would be happy to help out and, and just, you know, have it like a celebration. Have a one-day event where, you know, you cook some fish and feed some people and do that. That could be a step. A partial opening for a couple of weeks with a permit structure to get it done in two and a half months, that's, that's a lot for this year. But, you know, a celebration and then maybe some discussion on having a herring commission developed is probably a good idea.
Michael, are you good?
I just wanted to ask Joe if I could be a selectman and a commissioner at the same time.
You can. We're voting that down. No.
And do we get badges?
Yes, to the badges.
I want to as well, but I can't.
And then just real quickly on Brad's, if we did, if you got, if we did manage to put together a one-day celebration, I'd be happy to donate my time and find as many people as you want for that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That's the effort that I'm looking for here.
You don't want him cooking it.
Didn't say cook.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, Madam Chair, and decals for his truck too. Don, you weren't here for last year. I was here in the early 2000s when the census was going down, down, down. Just so you understand, this is a legacy for the town. And Michael, I'm totally supportive of Michael's saying is that, just so you understand, we incurred the wrath of the state by closing down the runs when the state asked to keep them open because we were really concerned about the long-term viability of them. So, we did that. I still remember Sid Ziegler talking about sending the police over to arrest the environmental police if they did anything to open them up. But we, we are good stewards of this. Two things come to mind. First of all, whatever we can do to get them open, because it's responsible now. The census is going up. We're in a position where we can do this stuff. I understand that it's tough on you, but, so you bet, you have to plan on, this is going to happen, whether it's this year for a little bit or next year, full bore. It's going to happen, number one. Number two, I'm just letting you know how I feel right now. Having experienced this from the very beginning to when they got closed and now when we're talking about opening them, I'm not a big fan of a commission. It was really because it was a political discussion with the Board of Selectmen at the time that we decided to close it down as a responsible action. And I'm not sure that I want to cede that authority to a commission of some sort without seeing how that works because the board, the board's really been on top of this through the years. We had opportunities to open up the run too, the runs, but we decided not to because it didn't look quite good enough at that point. So, I, I don't want to be glummed with the other communities. We've actually been at the forefront of closing and now trying to open.
Sure. And I think that also fell along with the, you know, the overall plan of my predecessor and, you know, and the situation of where we're at as a department as well, you know. And it's, you know, we have to walk before we run. And right now, the department in the time period is tying shoes, you know. I think that this is a huge undertaking and one that is so important, you know, to residents, to the history of, of where we stand. And to go in it as maybe, you know, a one-day opening or a celebration, I think that it's, it can be beneficial, but it also can show a lot of indecisiveness and a lot of, you know, reasoning behind no structure to the enforcement if we don't have any, any way to answer the first question that comes our way. You know, there, this conversation that we sit next to Brad, this is one of two conversations since I've taken on, you know. So, we haven't, you know, the, the process is just starting. We're just stoking the fire, you know, between the two of us, which is, you know, which is good that we're here now.
It's good, and we need to keep having discussions. I will say the plan took three years to develop, and it was pretty well-vetted. The Board of Selectmen approved it. It was submitted to the Atlantic States Marine Fisheries Commission, and that commission approved the plan. So, I feel the plan is sound. I'm familiar with all plans in the East Coast because I've worked on a technical committee that reviews the plans. I think it's the most conservative on the East Coast. So, I think it's a good plan, but I think it's just too much time to ask you to assemble the permit structure, all that process for the spring.
And more importantly, you know, the enforcement as well. You know, given that the plan may set forth, you know, good standards for other communities and other departments, how many staff members do they have? How many vehicles do they have? You know, how many processes do they have to be able to go throughout, you know, the day and be able to, to be present, to be able to be present in a good standing? And I think that's something to consider.
I just wanted you to hear the history of Harwich as part of this so that you understood how important this is to us.
I could add quickly to Don's comment on the herring commission. I would recommend it would be an advisory commission, not a commission of authority, a commission that would put volunteers in the direction of Don's department.
Sounds good on you.
I have to say, so much of your information, when I was reading through it, it's like the, the history of it is, is amazing. And to see all the different areas and how they intertwine into your point about trying to get something up and regulated. I, I think, although I like the idea of a celebration, I think you might open a different can of worms with that too because you're now saying, look at this, and then we don't have a system in place to, to permit things. So, that would be my concern. Jeff?
Thank you both for being here. And as I sit here and listen, there can't be a yes without a how. And it doesn't sound to me like there is a true how, even for a one-day at this point. So, I, I would, I'd be leaning more to supporting our Director's, you know, how you feel about it and what you think would be the right move to make. I, I can feel the compression on you, you know.
I have a timeline in mind if I could, if I could throw it out there.
Please.
What I'd like is I'd like another discussion a year from now about this time period and to see what we can develop, you know, between now and then with the full focus of having a run open by next spring would be my, my goal and our intentions. Right now, you can't rush perfection. And of course, there can't be a yes without the how. So, that's what I want to be able to sit down between this time period and, and really, you know, cross the Ts and dot the Is. That's it. That's what we could push for.
I would even, I would even argue that having conversations a lot sooner than this time next year.
Absolutely.
So that we could have, whether it's an advisory commission or someone to help you
Yes.
with this specific task that is so integrated into this town of Harwich.
Sure.
I, I agree with you, Don. I think having other towns come into this, I, I'm not really, I don't know how I'd feel about that. But if there's no how, I, I can't, I can't say yes.
Okay. So, you'll continue to have conversations and then in terms of the advisory commission, will you look at sort of how you would formulate that and then work with administration and so that we could see how that was going to come about?
Absolutely.
I think Brad's idea of an advisory commission is a good idea versus something more regulatory.
I recently summarized all herring commissions in Massachusetts to the town of Braintree that asked for such a summary. So, I have that summary ready to go.
Oh, great.
There's probably a dozen towns that have them. And so, I could just, you know, update that summary and provide it to Don.
Perfect. That'd be great.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, bring back for an opening next year, not for more conversation?
No, the conversation is starting today and it's going to continue throughout this, you know, throughout this season into this year, including, you know, being able to be side-by-side with Brad. You know, Johnson's flume, like we discussed previously about electronic counter and the processes to some improvements in different ways and just, you know, more structure between us as well.
Yep.
To be able to have something, you know, lined up and projected for, you know, for 2025 spring opening.
Yep.
Which seems to be prepared, you know, by that, by that point.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for coming tonight. We appreciate the information.
Thank you for having us.
Do you want to speak at all, Ray, or? If you guys have a moment?
Sure.
I knew we had a professional in the room.
Yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I love your enthusiasm for opening up a run. I sit on the Atlantic States Marine Fisheries Commission. I chair our Marine Fisheries Advisory Commission on a state level. I share your enthusiasm and Brad's. I mean, Brad's done a lot of work on this. It was reviewed by the Technical Committee at ASMFC, and it is only one run that we're talking about. We're not talking about opening up every run in the town of Harwich. I'd also like to remind the board that these citizens that are here from Harwich, these are commercial fishermen and the people who want to take these herring for sustenance. We put the law on a state level about 15 years ago, promising the public that we'd be opening these runs up within three years. That was 15 years ago. Meanwhile, you've got an industrialized fleet that's allowed to take river herring caps. And I'm sure you're all aware of that. I'm sure Don Howell's aware of it. The Alliance spoke to you a couple of years ago. We got the buffer zone. It was overturned by a federal judge, and we're now working on amendment 10 at the New England Council process to get the buffer zone reinstated. But I have all the faith in the world in Brad and this young gentleman's new to his job. But I certainly appreciate your enthusiasm. And that was, it was failed to be mentioned that we're only talking about one run in Harwich, but it's time to give the public access. And I realize the bureaucracy and how things take time. So, hopefully, these two gentlemen will be able to keep this ongoing conversation. So, next year, he can come back and say, yes, we have something in place. Brad and I have kicked this around. I guess this particular run is gated. The road is gated.
Can be, yeah.
Or it can be. You've got cameras, Procams. You've got enforcement, and I will talk to enforcement to make sure they're down here. And also, when we spoke about this, you know, river herring don't run every day. One day, you'll get a charge of them, and the next day, you get a few of them. And you can limit it to a number of days a week, you know. Just different ideas Brad and I have been kicking around because I know in his heart, he's worked hard for DMF. He's done a great job with, you know, putting in new flumes, clearing runs, you know, taking debris out of runs. We want to bring them back, but let's keep in mind that there isn't a commercial industrial fleet taking river herring right now. And it's time citizens of Massachusetts get an opportunity to take river herring, whether it's for bait, for commercial strip of fishing or bluefin tuna fishing, or for sustenance. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
All right. Thank you.
Have a good night. Oh, sure.
Getting too old to do this stuff anymore, you know? By the time the river herring get to be like it used to be 25 years ago, I'll be in the dirt. But I do suggest that you give them a chance, let them spawn before you take them. That way, every one of those fish lay at least 10,000 eggs or more. You let them spawn first before you take them.
Makes sense.
You always got some left.
Mm-hmm. That makes sense.
All I got to say.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on? Thank you.
The move that we approve the General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 23B3, disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest for Ann C. Tucker, Planning Board.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Discussion on the request for a liaison to the Bonneville County Human Rights Advisors' Commission. So Joe, did you want to talk about this at all, or did you have any, no, am I putting you off?
Yeah, well, this, um, this didn't originally come into administration. My understanding is that this group is asking Harwich if you want to have somebody on this advisory commission.
So this got sent to me and I shared it because they are looking for somebody from Harwich to participate, a citizen to participate on this. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I add to that conversation? It's kind of important to us as a town because Ray Gottwald, who was Assembly of Delegates Representative, was, this was an issue that he pushed for to establish this commission. So we have direct ties to this. It would be really nice to make sure that we continue those ties.
Right. So I guess the question is to the public, is there anybody interested in, in this role in the Human Rights Commission? And you can find the description. It was in our packet.
Yeah, it's here. Function is an informational conduit, which means B H, B C H R A C.
We can post, I'm just looking through.
Do they have a deadline, or can we just post that with the recruitment so that the interview committee can?
Yeah, why don't we, we could post that on the website and then have the interview committee interview whoever, whatever applicants we get for it. And so I guess we just need to be clear that that's the committee they'd be applying for. Okay. So Joe, will you follow up on that, getting that posted?
Will do.
Thank you. And then a vote to direct the real estate and open space. Can I get a motion on that?
I move that we approve to direct the real estate and open space committee to evaluate 172, 178, and 246 Queen Anne Road for possible disposition.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So I'm just pointing out in the packet that if we were, whatever real estate and open space comes back to tell, tell us, we, we need to do more in terms of town meeting, et cetera, the way it was turned over to the town. Okay, so moved and seconded. Any other? Yeah, Michael?
So, thank you for putting this on the agenda. Real estate and open space is a, an agenda item for this on January six, 16th. So I guess to the town administrator, once they put their recommendation in, based on how I read memo, you have to circulate this to the departments in town to see if anyone's interested or not. We don't have to do that. I know we did on the last one we sold, that's why I'm asking.
So my understanding is these three parcels, for you to refer them to Rios, they can recommend disposition beyond current. Current disposition is that when these were approved by town meeting, they were given to the select board for open space. So if they recommend to you that something else be done, you'd have to go to town meeting.
What, is there a step, though? Sorry, thank you.
Yep.
That's how I read. Is there a step that you have to then put it out to departments in town? I guess, I'm a little anxious on this because of the lack of time between now and town meeting. And obviously, we did 1.5 million on the last lot that we sold, and there's very little industrial land and business growth, and these three lots would lend to that. So is there a chance of getting this on town meeting floor if they act quickly?
Uh, there is, and I'm, and I'm picking up what you're saying, meaning if, if the town through the select board and/or Rios is contemplating disposition by sale, we would have to declare it a surplus. What I don't know, though, is does the town meeting vote have to happen first? Because right now, the purpose of this land by the town meeting vote was to remain open space.
And is this, so on Michael's question, follow up, is that, was that land on Queen Anne that we sold, was that under the same kind of auspices of those, these parcels?
No, my understanding is that was a, a different scenario.
Right.
That the town owned the parcel straight up. There was no known restriction on it.
Nothing, yeah.
Uh, the town was using it for other municipal purposes. However, if memory serves correctly, we still had the authorization to dispose. Where these three came to you through tax idle taking and the purpose of keeping as open space.
Right.
I don't know that it can be declared surplus unless and until town meeting authorizes a potential sale. So I can ask that as a follow-up question to council.
Okay. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In support of what Michael was saying here, uh, we do an awful lot of things at town meeting blindly, I mean, with estimates and everything. It'd be kind, it'd be kind of refreshing to be able to put out an RFP on this thing and know what we're actually talking about before we ask town meeting, do you want to do, you want to go this direction, or you just want to withhold it? There'd be something tangible there. Otherwise, we're just talking in the abstract, it's like, we could get money if somebody bid on this, which is kind of scenario where a lot of things at town meeting, it would be really nice to be able to get the citizens to know, if you do this, you get this. If you do that, you won't. So when you're talking to legal counsel, it's kind of important, if there's a way to do this, it would be nice to put the RFP out, know a solid figure, and then go to town meeting and say, do you want to accept this by changing the rules on the property, or you want to keep them as open space? Otherwise, it's just an abstract discussion.
Well, I think, just to follow up on that, though, I think we would need to understand, if we're going to refer them over to real estate and open space, to take a look at them and, right? We still, in the meantime, want to understand overall what legal says we could eventually do with them, because we may find out that there is a couple more hoops we have to jump, you know, through, or that we can't, that we're limited. So I think it's a combo. Let them look at it, but while, while they're, while we're referring it to them, let's get more from legal on what we can even do, because we don't want to waste their time either.
And to make no mistake about it, I'd like to go to town meeting with a suggestion from real estate and open space, a vote of this board to sell those properties and get town, this town meeting's blessing. Whatever else we add to that, we'll add to it. I would like to propose to the board, as this goes forward, that that money goes into an account to continue to work on the $7 million worth of tax problems that we're having, and 3 million of that being owner's unknown.
And just one question.
So that's my intent, and, and I hope to get it on town meeting floor this year.
Did you mean that they were meeting on 2/16? Because I think you said?
2/16.
2/16, okay.
February 16.
February, yeah.
Can we infer from the vote that the reference to Rios is for disposition by sale?
Yes.
Okay.
With the understanding that you're going to get the legal background?
Yep, absolutely, yeah, the, all the steps that go with that.
Right. Okay. So did we, I didn't think we took a vote.
We didn't vote, honey.
We didn't vote yet.
Now, there's a motion to, to refer.
To refer it to.
To refer.
Oh. Did it have a second?
And I think Michael wanted that to say for the purpose of.
Yeah. Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Who's on first? That's what I meant.
I don't even know what to say to that.
Oh, my God. Moved and seconded. And so no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Old business, discussion on land of low value. So I brought this back. This is about an auction. And Joe, I'll let you go ahead and describe the overall process.
Well, I think it would be fair to say that there has been discussion amongst town departments and also discussion with members of the board, or a member of the board, I apologize. And I do not have anything in my packet, so.
Well, then, I can do an over, overview. So I had a conversation, I think Mary, prior to her leaving the board, had some conversations. I think staff has some, and I shouldn't say, I don't know the right word to say, but some limitations currently in dealing with some of this in terms of what we think it entails in terms of having an auction and what others may think it entails. So the information in the packet is supposed to be to get a feel for this land that we're talking about and whether or not it's worth having another auction. We had an auction, I think it was two years ago? I'm just looking through my stuff. So what? What's the matter?
I was looking for something in the packet.
In any case, the, the question is whether or not we want to move forward with land of low value, or is this something we want to table for now? There's a particular six acre parcel that is wetlands, but, you know, for me, looking at it, I look at it that we've traded off some land in terms of wastewater and stuff, because we don't know. Things continue to change, and if there's a way to save the land as a commodity, the overall value isn't high, because it is a wetland. But it, it totals about six acres, and then there are some smaller parcels, and they are all listed. So I'll, I'm opening it up to board members for discussion. Don?
Just as a point of information, Madam Chair, we already have voted to move forward on this, and we actually asked, and Michael wasn't going, just as, on his own, we asked him to go as a representative in furtherance of what we voted. And in order for us to back off and not do this, we'd actually have to have a positive vote to stop it. Because we've already voted to move forward with this.
Understood, understood that we already voted this, but like I said, we can always bring things back. So we brought it back because there was the feeling in, in the finance and treasurer's office that they don't currently have the capacity to do that while they're working on their other items. And then I know that there's a different point of view in terms of whatever has to be involved with them, but overall, the departments are involved in this. And the question is, is it a priority currently, based on us trying to get our other information and financials and budgets and all of those things, so we can move forward with our discussions? So it's back on for whatever discussion. Take whatever action you want. I just brought it back to the board. Michael?
So I think you started the conversation that we're about two years in on this process, started by, I believe it was Amy Bullock, and the seven, I think it's seven parcels left, but don't quote me on that. These are the leftover from the last two auctions.
Right.
So this closes a loop, and it's been said to me that it's such low value at this point that we can table it more or less, and it doesn't really matter. We have the deeds to them now. For me, it's finishing a project that we started, and it's honoring what Amy Bullock started, and it's honoring the assessing department and real estate and open space, and everybody that has put an exorbitant amount of time in this. And, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's a matter of calling Sullivan and Sullivan, who I think put us in touch, or the last auctioneer, whom is still in business, and telling them we want to have another auction. I believe it's that simple. And, and legal, legal has at least confirmed to me back when Mary Anderson was chair, that we can do that. And I do understand what you're saying about the departments and the overload, but it's also my understanding that we could appoint the town administrator as the point person on this, and he can reach out to the auction company. The work's already been done, and wetlands is not an offset for wastewater. So I contacted, I contacted Larry Bentone, I contacted Dan Pelletier, and I contacted CDM Smith.
Yeah.
And the wastewater is not an issue on this, because it was all based on developable land.
I know that.
Okay. So I don't understand how we are here, and I believe my request started eight months ago, and we have not pulled the trigger on something that we've already voted. Whether we're going to bring it back or not bring it back, it's been voted, and we should appoint the town administrator, and we should move forward, in my opinion.
So, so for clarification, I became the chair at the end of October, November? This was given to me after you had looked at it and Mary had looked at it, and then I vetted it, because that was really my first exposure to all of the information in the quest for the auction and the different feedback from departments. So in fairness to myself, I've been involved in this for two to three months. Some of them involved holidays, so I will say two months. And here we are, having a discussion, and I did put it right back on an agenda to have this discussion, because there are different points of views of how to move forward. And to me, although we voted something, I'm bringing it back to the board, because there's differences of opinion on how and when and why. So that's why it's back on the board. Yep, Michael?
Just for clarity, my statement was that we were seven months of me asking for this, not that you've helped me.
No, I know. I, I'm just clarifying.
Seven months of us waiting to finish a project that's three quarters done.
Well, my point.
Awful lot of opinions floating around about how we got to where we got to. But what we got to was a board vote on what we were doing, with a tremendous amount of work from several department ads, and a, a committee that has done an exorbitant amount of work on this, in general, the topic. And I'd like to move forward with it and make it a priority.
And?
Because the board did priority all of this in another meeting where we made priorities on owner's unknown, land of low value, and back taxes. So I'd like to move forward on it. I'd like support of the board tonight to do so, and have the town administrator be the point person to move forward.
I feel we've already voted on asking to do that.
May I ask, Madam Chair, when was that vote taken? Do you know approximate date?
About three quarters of a year ago.
So before me, I believe.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well before.
Well before me. I'll make a motion. I think. I'll, I move. I, I move that we act as the previous board directed to have our town administrator be the point person to move this project forward.
Second. For the purpose of sale.
For the purpose of sale.
Moved and seconded.
Sorry, no, I'm sorry, Joe.
And it's for discussion, if I could.
Yep.
The, my understanding is the previous vote was not of the board to direct the administrator. I had information provided by council in the fall that said the board could identify someone other than the treasurer, and I have suggested that that other could include me as town administrator.
So I'll.
This wasn't on you. I agree.
I'll amend the motion to, at the pleasure of the board.
If I may, just to reaffirm, to reaffirm a third auction on the land of low value and to appoint the town administrator to be the point person.
That's what I said.
Still seconding it.
Moved and seconded. Any other? Any other discussion?
The only question I have, Joe, and, and just, you know, we've got the procurement list coming up. Do you have a timeframe on when you will make contact, at least with the, with the auction company? And will the board be able to review the value that we're going to put on that procurement before we submit it?
So I, to the second point, I believe, yes, you would be, because I think that's part of the process, that you'd have to, I ascribe something to that. For me, I'm going to reach out to the last known auctioneer and say, here's the information from council, it says we can do this, the board's authorized me to act on this behalf. Please tell me your project plan.
Thank you.
So moved and seconded. No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm a no. And let's see. Onto the discussion on the revised job description of the assistant town administrator. It's in your packets. Does anyone have any questions? Anyone want to provide any feedback? We're looking at, as we discussed in previous meeting, I think it was probably two, three weeks ago and prior to, looking at the assistant town administrator's position in relation to the fact that we were also talking about hiring an HR person. And so in the packet, you've got the current assistant town administrator, Megan Eldridge's job description with both, with, with HR included and then removed, and then you have a pay scale and the creation of a different grade level. I'm just trying to get to it. And so I don't know if anyone has any questions, comments, statements? Michael?
I thought the, I thought it looked great, you know, with the assumption that town meeting passes the, the HR director. I don't see the compensation schedule.
Oh, it should be in here.
I didn't see it either.
That's number one, and, and then number two, two, go ahead.
So I believe compensation schedule is the next discussion, based on which job description you pursue, because that would impact upon the recommended salary level.
Oh, sorry, yeah, okay.
So given that you have two, you know, completely different scenarios here. One, not changing anything, and the other devolving some to as an HR role. So if you have a preference of either option A or B, that will then, next week, have the conversation on compensation.
Okay, so that piece was pulled, then. Is there a preference, Michael?
I, I think B, right? Because it seems to be the will of the board, and definitely the will of some folks in town, anyway, to have the HR position. I guess, you know, picking B, though, in my mind, delays something that we probably should have done a long time ago. So I would ask the town administrator how we move forward on looking at the assistant town administrator, her compensation now, rather than waiting until after town meeting and adopting an HR position and a new description. I personally am not interested in waiting that amount of time to review Megan's comp, the assistant town administrator compensation for the job that she's doing now.
I agree, yeah.
I agree with that.
So the answer to that would be, we can have a conversation next week about the personnel bylaw class and comp tables, and we would be discussing that relative to ATA based on current jobs.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And in so saying, with the board sentiment, I personally, I don't know, I think the rest of the board probably believes this, too. I don't think that the deletion of one duty actually subverts her pay scale support, because regardless of who holds this position, there, there's voluminous amount of authority and responsibility in this that have been built in. responsibility in this that have been built in through the years. So I don't, I don't see how taking the one function out would wind up subverting, supporting the pay scale or even an increased pay scale. Because this, it was never based on just this one function.
No, there's a tremendous amount of work involved in the ATA's position. So then why don't we, do we, do you need us to take a vote technically? Because we're just telling you to move ahead with-
No, you're going to have, I think, a further conversation on enhancement of services and all that other stuff.
Right.
Separate and distinct, we're having a compensation conversation next week anyway as it relates to personnel bylaw class and comp table for managers.
Okay. All right, great.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
If you could postpone, I will not be here next Monday night. I'll do my best to zoom in, but where I'm going to be, I'm not 100% sure.
Okay.
So if we could push this off-
To the 19th?
Yeah, to the next meeting. Not trying to delay it, but I'd like to be face to face part of the conversation.
So we'll hold-
Is that on the comp or the job description?
I feel like, well, either one. I'm fine with the job description. I'll say it now or even vote that now. Based, but it really all hinges on town meeting vote. Because if town meeting doesn't vote-
Right.
Right.
To support the new HR position, it's what we want right now is irrelevant. We can look at her job description, but it's probably not going to change. So-
So you were making reference to the compensation conversation?
Compensation is what I'm talking about.
So we'll do comp on 2/19.
Okay, thank you. I only have one question, and it's related to the town administrator through the chair. It's related to procurement. And in the new revised job description, it puts a lot of emphasis on procurement for the Assistant Town Administrator. We found ourselves, I don't know, six plus years behind on procurement. And I'm wondering if we should be looking at a plan because nowhere do I see the next person being able to be trained in procurement for the town of Harwich from the Assistant Town Administrator. And if we lose that, then we lose momentum and we fall behind again. So what can we do? And I know on one specific project, the last time we went over this list, the person in its department is trained in procurement, and I brought up, maybe we should, you know, work with that person to start the procurement. To my knowledge, that hasn't been done yet. What can we do to build a procurement team so that we're not behind and it's not bogging down any one person? And maybe that's a longer conversation, but I wanted to get it on the table.
In the short term, the Assistant Town Administrator and I have talked for the three years we've been a team about working with any department heads that either have that skill and ability, as several of them do, at least one of whom is here and one was here earlier. We're also supporting other department heads going through the procurement certification process. So that's part of the training that we have available and working with department heads to get more proficient at that. I would argue that, I think, you know, having been brought in many years ago with that task, I think the process changes went a long way. And so I think the plan should be that we all continue to support department heads growing under procurement ability, that making the commitment to allow them to go to those courses and get the certification. Because then everybody is expert at procurement, everybody has the background, and you have a number of certified people that could step up as the chief procurement if needed. So I think we're already, you know, the process had to go first. We're expanding the ranks. I think since we've changed the procurement, there are, well, we lost one to another town, but I think we have six or seven that have gone through the certification and can be or are certified for procurement that could become chief procurement officers. So I think, you know, whether you bake it into this job description or anything else, it's really an ongoing commitment to the training that's required to do that. And we have that, and I would recommend you keep doing that.
So once they complete that training program, they're then certified to be a procurement officer?
So they are, they are a Certified Mass Public Procurement Officer, MPPO.
Okay.
You can only have one chief procurement officer, and the inspector general's office understands in Harwich, it's the town administrator role, and that ties to the charter. But everybody else that's certified, we are all in the same boat that there's any number of courses we have to keep up on. There's a four-year period where you go for a recertification. At least that's how it was two years ago when I was that deep into the program. So there's certification that you earn, and then you get recertified over time. And you do that by taking more classes.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments on that item?
Nothing except for if, as this evolves, can the board get an update on it? And anyone currently that can do procurement, can we please reach out to them and ask them to help on some of the projects that aren't moving forward?
Yeah, well, actually, on a follow-up on that, I was going to say, when you were saying six to seven people, it would be, and maybe you already have this in terms of your mindset, but it would be good to have every department have somebody certified in procurement if that department tends to need to, I know not every single department is to need that.
For me, I've said in my tenure here that a department head is a subject matter expert plus. And a big part of that plus is budget development, personnel management, but also procurement management. And so that's why any of our directors that are in that management level, I can't think of one that has not touched upon a procurement process. So we're introducing them to procurement generally. Now, it varies greatly. Obviously, if you're a single-person department and don't have an expansive department, you're not going to do a lot.
Right.
But we still, Megan and I, still look for opportunities for them to learn. Every department head is trained on our procurement system, the paperwork to initiate procurement, the 30B contracts that you need, the post-procurement and all that. And so they're judged on that, on their annual reviews as to how well they do procurement. To the point of certification, no objection whatsoever from me or from the Assistant Town Administrator. And I can tell you, just from my career, I've seen the value in that. The only rub there is commitment to the training. We have to send them to so many courses that they then have to pass certain, you know, certification exams on. So there's a dollar cost there, and there's a time commitment there. But that's something that I've never said no to, quite the opposite. So if there are department heads that are not well-versed or fully skilled in procurement, we can absolutely, we as a town, through the support of the board, can take them to the next level.
Great.
And that next level is working through the actual certification process.
Okay.
Because to the points that are being made, any organization with the amount of procurement power that we have, you're going to benefit by having all of these experts on hand, no question.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Discussion on the bylaw charter review committee charge. Any questions on it, any?
Yeah, if I may, Madam Chair, there was one, I raised one concern at our previous meeting where this was up, under scope and responsibility, the select board shall submit all articles, so forth and so on. And I just didn't feel that was part of their scope and responsibility. I thought it was our scope and responsibility.
Yeah, we, I thought we were taking that piece-
So I'm, I, I'm just asking what the-
Yeah, no, I recall that comment, and I actually, I'm just going to my notes on it because I think I noted that that was coming out.
Other than that, I think it's, well done.
What page is that?
You are on page-
No, I have the charge. I'm just looking for my notes. Hi. Go ahead.
Linda Sibula for the bylaw charter review committee. While I do understand whose responsibility it is to get something within the 14 days, we still feel pretty strongly that we need to have that in the charge because that's something we're supposed to be looking for. So we feel pretty strongly about that. So I'd like, we would request that it stay in.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In support of what Linda's saying, as I was the chair of that committee, 1.2, and frankly, there were many years where nothing happened. Nothing got referred at all because there was no responsibility on the part of the board to do it, even though the charter said that they had to review this stuff. So I don't know how you want to handle it, but it's got to be somewhere that we're responsible for referring to them because there is no mechanism other than that. On the charter review committee, they wouldn't be in a position to know everything that would, because the articles get submitted, you know, either if they're petition articles, they go through the town administrator's office. Frankly, it's hard to grasp on it, but technically, they're even supposed to be looking at zoning bylaws to make sure that they're consistent in numbering. So if they don't get the stuff within the referral period, you're just sitting there waiting. And I know many years, I actually asked in March, biweekly, when are we going to get this, when are we going to get this? So somewhere, somebody's got to be responsible in writing.
I don't argue any of that. I think I went back and watched the meeting, and it appeared when that came up, there was a question of, I think it said five days at first, and then it got changed to the 14 days, if I remember correctly.
We were trying to see if you could sneak that by.
Well, and then you tried to sneak it by again this time, and I'm-
It still says 14.
No, I understand, but I believe in that meeting, you felt that it was not an unreasonable request from me, and I was fully expecting to see it removed because of how our interaction went, or the interaction that night. I don't-
I'm going to, I'm going to agree with Don in that the only place that is written is in the charter. It's on nobody's charge. The board is, the select board does not have its own committee charge that's supposed to be doing this. So on reflection, I'd like it to stay in there. And quite frankly, if we see a better production by day 14, we could consider taking it out because we are following the rules. But we would like to keep it in there.
Can you read again the sentence that we're talking about?
Sure. So under scope and responsibilities, I'll read the whole piece. All articles proposing changes to the charter and/or bylaws shall be reviewed by the bylaw charter committee, review committee. The select board shall submit all such articles to the bylaw charter review committee no later than 14 days after the deadline for submission of articles.
So the hinge is the select board shall submit all such articles by, to the bylaw within the 14 days.
Right.
And in keeping with all the other charges, there have been other things that this board has taken and removed, like housing advocate.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's not germane to the scope and the procedure or the scope and responsibility of this particular charge.
So in essence, that, we're adding a duty into their charge that somebody else already has.
It's in the charter.
Yeah, that we have to do it.
And if I've heard you, and if I've heard you correctly, it has not been common practice for this board to do what the charter states it should.
Correct.
And I, and I think, I believe I said this at the meeting, I agree with you, and, but I still don't think that reaches the threshold of putting something into this charge. And that's all I'll say. I'm not, you know, I'm not going to die on the hill.
No, on that, on that point, though, we, you know, we've got other deadlines in our charter that are what they are. And, you know, we've talked about how some of them really compress us in certain scenarios. I just see this as just, you know, it's, to your earlier point, this is their charge, but they're assigning us a task. And it doesn't really follow with what we've done in other charges.
I can, I can, while I'd like it to stay in there, Madam Chair, I can live with taking it out.
Okay.
But I will be on day 15, calling you.
I don't doubt it.
Day 15, I will be calling you and saying, where is?
And I will say, Linda, thank you for that reminder.
Yeah, I'm sure you will.
Yeah, I would support removing it.
I'm fine, I can live with that.
And then I have one question. I know I brought this up last time. Shall submit a report to town meeting concerning any proposed amendments or revisions to the charter and/or bylaws? And then you go on to say, including the bylaw charter review committee recommendations. What do you mean by that?
I think we answered that, I answered that last time, which was if there is a bylaw and/or charter change before town meeting, we would reserve the right to stand up, or not reserve the right, we would feel it was our responsibility as the bylaw charter review committee to stand up and say, we've reviewed this, maybe we had a public hearing on it if it so entailed that. We think it's a makes sense change, and we support it and hope you will vote for it. Or we think it's complete hogwash, and we think you should not support it. That's the kind of report I'm looking to say, is that, we think that that's our responsibility to tell town meeting that a committee has looked at these according to the charter, and we are saying, we have looked at it, and we support, not support, we recommend you do this, that, or the other thing.
So I would move that we strike including the bylaw charter review committee recommendations and leave the first sentence in.
What's the first, what is, read the sentence?
Shall submit a report to town meeting concerning any proposed amendments and/or revisions to the charter and/or bylaws, period.
Okay.
I don't see the point in adding the second line because if you submit a report and stand up, you can, you can give the report. This doesn't read right to me.
Okay, we can take that section out as long as we're not taking out the, giving a report to town meeting on a bylaw or charter change.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it?
That was the other one that I had.
Yeah, those two. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to Linda's point, it's a charter responsibility. It was delegated in the language that they have to give a report, and it's very similar to what the planning board does with a zoning bylaw, where they're asked by the moderator to stand up and give a report.
Don't have a problem. I think it's covered in the first sentence.
The last, the part of the sentence, the last part of the sentence.
Okay, so, so we're striking those two elements, and let's just be clear on that so we could just vote this.
Perfect.
Right?
Move to accept it with the deletion of the two sections that Michael referenced.
Second.
Second.
Second, but by way of discussion, I just want to outline it for the public.
Yep.
Right.
So under shall submit a report to town meeting concerning any proposed amendments and/or revisions to the charter and/or bylaws, stops there with a period.
Right.
Period, yeah.
And then the other one is the select board shall submit, shall submit all such articles to the bylaw charter review committee no later than 14 days after the deadline for submission of articles.
Struck.
Those two things are struck.
Struck, right. Okay, so with those two struck, we have, we have a motion and a second.
And a second.
You do.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And just one thing. Who is going to get this for final form? Linda, you going to write it and then send it?
Well, I can just strike those and I'll send it back to the chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And now our review of the ongoing product list that was provided by the-
I have to express my gratitude for the size of the print on the sheet.
Well, you can express it to me because I called, specified the font size.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I can actually see it.
Well, I guess, what I guess I would say is you can see the memo, the cover memo from the Assistant Town Administrator identifying where we are with the categories. 24% of the total projects on the list have been completed. 52 are in various stages of completion, and only 24% await initiation. Since that memo was generated, there have been some minor updates. So I think we're working off of the same list. If you look on the first page under hearing room, excuse me, under channel 18 equipment, the initiation was done, and there is a new camera, if I'm saying that correctly, on channel 18 equipment line.
So complete?
No, there will be, in process.
Okay.
What's the reference to new camera? What's the reference to new camera?
Jamie Goodwin, Harwich Channel. Just for clarification, that's a split article. So 47 and change should go monomoy from 2023 Annual Town Meeting, and 4,000 and change is for a new camera for this year's Annual Town Meeting, which is in a cart. I just got to press by now, so. Any questions on anything else in that list?
Look from-
For me? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. On that same page, next one, you'll see that the bleachers and fans changed from DPW to the Community Center. And there's going to be some more updates on some of those related to Public Works. I met with the director last week. The director and I are going to meet, this is Public Works, tomorrow to go through some more of the DPW projects because I believe since- the report was issued. If you go to the last page, the second and third from the top on the last page, I expect to get confirmation, I think I'm meeting tomorrow, that those are merely remaining balances. So then that would go to the effort that's mentioned in the Assistant Town Administrator's memo and that I referenced in the budget, potential rebalancing for those because it appears that the department is saying that there is a remaining balance and there is no further need, as contemplated originally in those two articles.
And that was item two and three on the last page?
Correct, last page. So 2018, Article 10, HVACs, 2018, Article 9, boilers.
Julie?
What?
If I may? Third page, 2023, vehicle replacements, two MSW trailers, two dumps. Initial appropriation, $515,000, spent $310,000. And that, Joe, falls into my question overall about remaining balance, 11 projects. When will the board take a look at reappropriation? I think is the way we've discussed it.
Yeah, so that's what I mentioned by rebalancing, reappropriation. That's part of the all other funds available, and we're actively going through that. So something like that. We're going to be aware of the article. We're going to read the original motion. We're going to work with council to see what language change needs to be put in for it to be rebalanced.
Back to my comment about procurement team rather than a procurement person or two. I'm going to be reluctant to vote on some departments' asks this year based on having 22 waiting to be initiated. So can we get some sort of explanation at some point beyond what we just got with one correction on why, and a lot of them happen to be one department? Maybe you're already addressing this with what you last said, but when these things are going to be initiated, and if they're not that important based on the age of them, when are we going to turn them back to taxpayers?
So to that last point, age is also factoring into the rebalancing. However, I think what we're finding in a lot of these awaiting initiation, and the one that catches my eye is if you look at the bottom of the first page, there was a Heritage Trail project, and the next page is the Heritage Trail Boardwalk. So if you remember the original genesis of why we have this report, it was to make sure that we were not losing track of projects related. So those two are actually related to Harwich Conservation Trust. So when we say awaiting initiation by them, there's probably a better way to catalog that. They may or may not go forward. That's CPA funds, and our conservation administrator is aware of it. So we're not losing sight of it on, like, two of those. I think there are a couple other examples like that where, quite frankly, over time, the original purpose faded out because of other changes, you know, to the ownership of the land or different things like that. However, I appreciate and respect and agree that we wouldn't want to be expanding this list right back up again on May 7th because of town meeting. So that's why I'm having these more direct conversations to say, all right, on awaiting initiation, I mean, if you count it up real quick, if there's anything that's 23, that's obvious. Anything older than 23 is not obvious. Does that make sense about next steps?
Julie, only two more.
Yep.
2018-
Which page?
Article 47, third page again, very bottom, Willow Street, which was given to the housing advocate. Are we anticipating any article on town meeting floor for this? Willow Street's been going on as long as I've been on the board.
Longer than that.
It would be nice to finish this one eventually. So are we any closer to that?
We are. The reference to legal and not procurement is that Katie Klein had evaluated that next step, and had come back, we're reaching out to the original surveyor to ask her questions. We believe if the answer is straightforward, the process is done.
Perfect.
But we're waiting to have that conversation. That's why it's a legal matter and not procurement.
Thank you.
Yep.
Last question, same page, one up, two up. 2022, Article 39, fund land research for assessing purposes. Original appropriation, $500,000. Balance, $406,400. I'm not advocating for getting rid of that. I'm advocating for using it. But I would like to get as part of the motion when we hired PK, I believe it was, or some acronym, IE Gale, when we hired that company to do the research, which I believe is the only thing that's been done with that money. We asked for quarterly updates as part of the motion. I'd like to understand how we spent $93,600 when a few weeks of her work was being used to certify the tax rate. I don't, I haven't seen anything. So I would love to see how we spent $93,600. What's been done? And verify that none of that money was used for that second contract for tax rate certification. That's all I have. Megan and yourself have done a great job. Only suggestion is maybe we could get rid of the ones that say complete to make this smaller.
So we do, meaning, and Megan, excuse me, the Assistant Town Administrator is very particular about that. You will not see them again, but we didn't want to miss the opportunity for you to see that category.
Great job.
So they do come off every time.
Thank you.
And thank you for that. And I'll work directly on the Munis reporting for that other article you just mentioned.
Okay, and if, Joe, if Munis is in the same code that normal people can't read, can you outline it in actual words for me?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, I think I can. Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, sure.
Yeah, Joe, great job, you and your team. I pulled out the July 24, 2023 one that you presented us and just checked it over, and you guys are, you all are really moving. Yeah, thank you.
Share that with the team.
I, yep, and that's what it takes. And I just have two quick questions, and I think I know the answer to one. Bylaw charter analysis, awaiting direction. So that sits, I believe, still with the chair, trying to get a hold of file.
And I have a call. I spoke with him today.
Yep.
I have a call with him on Wednesday. And then my question for him or where his counterpart may be is when, how quickly can we get somebody in front of the board to talk with us about the information we have to share and how to move forward?
Thank you. And then the second one, which is more of a procedural question on my part, Sand Pond Restroom Project, new building. So there is no active RFP for that currently. Am I correct with that assumption?
Can you direct me to the page real quick?
Sorry, page three?
Yep.
All the way down, 219, it's number 43 there. Sand Pond Restroom Project, just about all the way down.
I think this is the one, if, because this is the one we talked about.
We talked about.
And we had, it went out to bid twice, and there were no bidders. And so then it was a question of how to do something on a smaller scale.
I had somebody ask me if that was going to be, back out to bid, and I didn't know if, I don't know what the procedure is. We've got an active party looking to-
Sure, so the, the anticipated threshold, so given that it's over $100,000, requires us to do those processes. So that's what we determine next. We're not giving up on this, but we would evaluate, okay, if we're going to do this again, it's that process all over again. So if we're hearing from the marketplace, because we have seen those changes over the last two years, if the marketplace is softening up and we think we'll get a response, we'll generate it all over again.
Okay.
Is that what you're hearing, or?
I'm, I'm hearing that there's interested parties.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, so I think it still has to be the IFB RFP process because we do contemplate the entire value of that to be that dollar amount plus the construction level that it is. So if we're going to do it, we have to do it that way again.
Understood. And timeframe to get that?
So generally speaking, when we do RFPs, it's bare minimum, call it six to eight weeks because of the requirements. It's a construction project, I believe. It's going to require standard reg, not standard register, central register and all of that. Very quickly, as an aside piece, what Senator was talking about with the Municipal Empowerment Act, the governor is looking to ease those restrictions. So that's definitely one we'd love to see because when you get to that level, it's arduous.
Right.
It, it's just, it's a slog.
Right.
So I would say, you know, we want to think anywhere from six to 12 weeks, depending upon the marketplace.
Well, thank you, and thanks again to you and your team.
Thank you. I'll pass it along.
Please.
I had a question on the ADA sidewalks in Harwich Center. $50,000, and I thought we already dealt with sidewalks unless I'm missing a section.
No, and I think that gets to me, I think, or either DPW. Can you tell me what page you're looking at?
That's page one, and it's like almost three quarters of the way down. It's 2021.
Yep. So anytime you're seeing sidewalks, first of all, the 2021, it was re-energizing, I think, what was done in 2017. And since then, the directive that required it is no longer there. And meaning, I believe, the sidewalks are in compliance presently. However, I think it was also tied to another, oh yeah, right above it, sorry. 2019, Article 11, Harwich Center ADA sidewalk project.
Right.
So that money was insufficient. We supplanted it. So those, I would argue that those two should be combined because they are one and the same. However, that was also part of another sidewalk project that we inherited that was, if I remember correctly, it was an effort to go center, through the center, to the center. A sidewalk project that would go up Oak Street, continue on Main Street, and go down Sisson.
From the elementary school.
From the elementary school, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And so I think, you know, going back to the earlier discussions, those, I think, are ripe for rebalancing and for a Public Works type project, so to speak, you know, roadway or whatever. But want to make sure that all the facts that I just presented are accurate. And then tying in with that, the Brooks Library sidewalk repair, that, so if it's, it's for the benefit of the library. The library is not under our procurement jurisdiction, but it's also not something that falls directly to libraries to build sidewalks. So I will, that's one of the topics that we're talking about to find out, where are we with that? Is that still true balance, and do you need anything else?
I thought that, I thought that some of that improvement in Harwich Center was part of that complete streets or smart streets that was tied to the school, but-
It, it was, and then, that was the initiator, I think. That's where, that was the progenitor of all this. But then when it came time for the state to evaluate it, school administration had changed over, and there was a different mindset. You know, they, they weren't too keen on that. But I think more than that, it was not included on the tip project that the state was doing. If you remember, we get the bike lanes, and I think that's really where that ended up.
Okay, thanks. That's the only questions I had. Don, did you have anything?
But thank you for doing this, and thank you, Michael, for being able to be seen.
So now contracts.
So yes, this is a big one, as talked about before. So I would definitely ask that the board approve the contract between the town and GHD Incorporated. Again, GHD, Jeff Gregg, working for Mark Drainville. They've been doing great work on our watershed management plan, but this contract specifically is to rely upon them as our engineers as we go into our next major contract or sewer construction and contract. Please, please, please approve.
You going to motion?
Yeah, I move that we vote to approve a contract with GHD in the amount of $4,332,000 for construction phase services in relation to Phase 3 wastewater project.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Don?
Yeah, we don't want to let the moment pass without giving praise. Jeff, you weren't here for this, but the, the quality of the work and the output that we're getting from GHD is like head and shoulders above the engineering that we're getting before. These guys are interested, are totally receptive to looking at anything and trying to figure out what's best for the townspeople, and the quality of this stuff is really good. So I think Dan found them originally with you?
Griffin Rider, actually.
It was Griffin.
No, it goes to Griffin. He noticed the work that they had done in Chatham.
They do terrific work, so just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Michael?
Does this procurement go out for bid? I know that some engineering services doesn't have to go out to bid.
So most engineering contracts do not have to conform with procurement because it's engineering services, because it's major construction projects. However, when the town evaluated existing engineering services versus others, I'm relying upon, and it was sort of what your colleague had just mentioned, we have an engineering firm that is solid in that area. They're tied well to us. So we could have pursued any number of other firms. Doesn't mean we would have gotten them. But given the intersect of what they're doing for us, it dovetails perfectly. But engineering services are exempt from the procurement standards.
Thank you. Second, second question was a more to comment. GHD has been great. They've done an outstanding job. So no reflection on GHD on my no vote tonight, but it's incomplete. We don't have a signature from the finance director showing approved funds, and we don't have a procurement checklist. So I have to vote no, especially without the finance director signing it, saying available funds.
Thank you. So I was going to address that. So first of all, Dan confirmed for me at the end of his presentation, we had that as of 5:30 today. Dan and I were trying to get that well in advance of your, your meeting. And the other part I want to put out there is we have sufficient appropriation for the $50 million, as the question was asked earlier. Construction services are an element of that. We don't have the funds yet because we're going to borrow,[1718.94] but everything under procurement and mass finance law says, subject to appropriation. So GHD is aware that we have the appropriation, they know as part of their service, they're gonna help us when we go to the borrowing. So we do have those documents available. I wouldn't suggest you, if you're not comfortable doing it tonight, I don't want to freak Dan out, and I know that Jeff can report back to Mark, but we didn't get that information until today and I know it was a dire, dire need of Dan's to get the contract in front of you.
Just to that point, I have no objection to GHD.
Right.
And no, nothing on Dan.
Yep.
Without an incomplete packet, and we've talked about this now for a lot of years.
Yep.
The procurement checklist isn't in there too, and that's not to make people do more work, that's for me. So it's a very easy thing to look at and then go back and balance it. So I, I'm not in any way against this, it's just not complete.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair, might I suggest that we do hold off on this rather than taking a vote, because I feel the same way Michael does. That was a pitched battle, it took a number of years actually to get to the point where we were getting that information and I don't really want to give up that that's the way we operate. But no reflection on GHD, because they're like a godsend.
Well, looks like we have to hold, because we would be, I don't know how you would vote, Jeff, but.
Can it be put on next week's?
So I just ask, can you withdraw the motion rather than have it defeated?
Yeah.
I withdraw my motion.
It's not, it's not a compromise.
No, there was a, there was a motion in a second.
There wasn't, the second you did. You have to withdraw your second.
I did, I just.
Okay.
Thank you. Town Administrator's report, if I could do that, Madam Chair?
Yes.
First, some, some great news, again, this would have been announced last week, maybe with some punch, but very excited to announce that Natasha Lyon will be joining us next Monday as Executive Assistant to the Town Administrator and the Select Board. Very excited to have her joining us, she has a great background, most recently is in Barnstable County. She has been both a, not a law enforcement guard, I'm trying to say the fancy way for prison guard, without calling her a prison guard, but a guard in the correctional system for Barnstable County, who then moved into civil processing, so she's got a great background, legal and certainly for procurement and things like that, so we're really excited to have Natasha joining the team next week. And also wanted to announce that we have a contract with Duffy Health Center, you may recall the funds that are available. So we're very excited to partner with Duffy Health Center and what they're gonna be working on, this is ten thousand dollars out of the thirty-five that was available. They're gonna create and support a recovery build alternative peer group, which is just sorely needed in these times and we're excited to be able to use those funds and to partner with Duffy Health Center. And that would conclude my TA's report.
Thank you. Select Board report, Don?
I have nothing.
Uh, Jeff?
I have nothing.
Michael?
I just wanted to reiterate to Joe to pass along to Dan that tonight not being.
No, absolutely.
I want them to be clear that.
Absolutely.
I'm very happy with me.
No, you made it clear and that's no, no problem for messaging.
And then I have a few requests. I'd like to request that the board be given on paper that size with that font, the updated tax lien list. So wherever, wherever we are, as accurate as to wherever we are, an updated tax lien list for the board members in, in large font.
On eleven by seventeen, correct?
Please, and then I'd like to request, Julie, Madam Chair, update on two oh four Sisson Road, including programs and procurement.
Can you send me an email on that, just so I don't forget?
I will do that. And then I think it's about two years ago that I brought up the pickleball rates in two oh four Sisson Road, I'd like to agenda that because we have not gotten an answer and on two occasions, they've been before us, acknowledged it, and then nothing has come back.
I think he's, is Eric, are they in front of us next week? I can't remember.
You're talking, can you? I don't think they were scheduled.
I mean, fees in general, and then, you know, the policy, Julie, that we discussed on fee waivers and whatnot, I can wait.
Yeah, I have to draft that, so I haven't worked on that.
I can wait on that, but the pickleball thing, we agreed to get back to the public with what it would be. And I want it to be clear enough in the agenda item that I can make a motion, because at this point, that's one lingering thing, it would be nice to get behind us.
Yeah, well, I'll follow up on that.
And that's it?
Madam Chair, motion adjourned.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
No, I want to stay another minute.
Aye. They didn't vote, so they can stay.
Aye.